We're gonna start now. We have some administrative functions to take care of, which is why we have the delay. I require my ass all the members to take their seats and the visitors retire behind the rail and we can get the show started. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Reverend Leroy Simmons of Enon Tabernacle Baptist Church, Germantown Clergy Initiative, and Parents United for Public Education. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Gimm. I would ask all members and guests and visitors to please rise.
Shall we pray? Almighty God, Thou who has been our resting place throughout all generations, as taught by one of our junior deacons, before we ask you for anything, we want to thank you for everything. Thank you for a city government that has the habit of pausing to reverence you, to seek your guidance before they carry out the people's business, the people that you love. Keep them mindful of the fact that though they were elected by constituents, they are set aside by you to justly divide limited resources for us all, especially for the children, the poor, and the underserved. We are grateful to you for the victories that you've achieved through them, the victories that you've brought about even as they've been reconstructed. Lord, we thank you for what they've done with the school district, we thank you for what they've done with abuse, we thank you for the things that they've done that no one knows but you. Bless them for that. Father, we wish you bless them as they face this aggressive agenda today, the culmination of their sessions and before their summer break. Bless them with divine wisdom and understanding that they not sacrifice excellence in doing the great public greater good for expediency. Grant them the courage to stand for what is right in your sight, the grace to forgive as they are forgiven, and also to handle those things that could come from criticism and ridicule, so that they can justly divide and legislate. Father, remove barriers of unity that may be lodged in hearts and minds, in this body, in individuals, so that they might be able to reason together. Lift them beyond self-seeking and keep each of them focused on the greater good. Father, help them as they finish this day to go into a summer break so they can rejuvenate themselves, restore family relationships, families that have sacrificed just like them, and to rest and spend some quality time. Prepare them to come back and take care of your people's business. Father, we also can't come to you without lifting up and joining that great chorus of folks who beseech you to add condolences, special, special condolences to those who suffered in Orlando, those who have suffered throughout the world, in Kenya, those who are suffering today. Father, we ask that you will send your comforting angels to comfort those who have lost. We ask that you will send your healing hands to heal those who have been hurt physically and traumatically psychologically. Lord, we thank you for what you will do today and we give it over to you. We thank you for how you will do it and that we pray that it will all be pleasing in your sight, for we know as my ancestors, the Akon people in West Africa, would say, "Iche oluwa kolebaje," which interprets "God's work will never be destroyed." We thank you all for this prayer in the matchless name of your Son, Jesus the Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much for those inspiring words. Council ladies? Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 9th, 2016, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 9th, 2016 be approved.
Thank you. It's been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, June 9th, 2016. Standing approval. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. And the next order of business is requests for leave of absence, and the Chair recognizes Councilman Hayden.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the majority, there are no leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. The Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil for request for leave of absence on the minority.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and I would like to welcome everyone who has come down to witness their government in action. It's a pleasure to see the rafters fill. We usually get this at this time of year. We hope that your stay here today is a pleasurable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you so much for coming down. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Quina Sanchez, who presented a resolution recognizing Council Carlos Giralt Cabralis. I hope I did that right. Would the Council and those accompanying him, please join the Councilwoman at the podium? And Councilwoman, I think, understand we're gonna have a little entertainment also, Councilwoman? All right. Thank you. Go session. Thank you.
We needed a little bit of music. We needed a little bit of music to liven this up. So, good morning, and I don't want to belabor it, I know we have a long program. The person we're honoring today really exemplifies the type of leadership that allows Philadelphia to be the leader, a global city, proud of our sanctuary status, proud about the fact that we protect immigrants, that we welcome immigrants, and that this particular constituency, the Mexican community, has been well represented as it grows and contributes to the economy of the city of Philadelphia. I'm going to briefly allow my Council colleague, Councilwoman Gimm, who wanted to say a few words before the presentation.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Quina Sanchez. I just wanted to make a few statements. Prior to coming into Council, I spent 20 years of my life working within immigrant and communities who don't often have a voice in power. And in all of our struggles that we dealt with, whether it was around issues with force or whether it was language access, whether we were dealing with the schools and harassment and bias issues, issues that were challenging and difficult, issues that were joyful and cultural celebrations, our Council General for Mexico was there. And I want to extend our deepest gratitude from all the diverse immigrant communities of Philadelphia who wish him from the bottom of our hearts much gratitude, much joy in his next ventures in Asia, and that he will always have a home here in Philadelphia. Thank you.
So with that, we'll get started. Recognizing and honoring El Consul Carlos Giralt Cabralis on 25 years of outstanding public service to Mexico and the city of Philadelphia. Whereas Carlos Giralt Cabralis was born in Mexico City in 1963, where he took courses in strategic studies at the National Institute for Public Administration. Whereas Carlos has been working with the Mexican Ministry of Foreign Affairs since 1983 and became a foreign service career member in 1991. And?
And I'll just point out, as Chair of Global Opportunities in the Creative Innovative Economy, that our state does $4.6 billion worth of trade with Mexico, one of our top trading partners, to our benefit. And the Council General has been fantastic for the economic benefit of our city. Whereas, as an officer in Mexico City, he was the Analyst, Chief of Department for Consular Statistics, Vice Director for Consular Coordination, Director of Consular Affairs, Deputy General, Director for Consular Services, and Acting General Director for Consular Services. And whereas, in his role as a diplomat, he was appointed Deputy Counsel at the consulate of Mexico in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Deputy Counsel and Acting Counsel General at the Consulate General of Mexico in Sacramento, California, and Counsel of Mexico in San Bernardino, California. He returned to Philadelphia as the head of the consulate of Mexico and has served here since August 20th, 2010. And?
Whereas Consul Giralt Cabralis has demonstrated his commitment to improve the quality of the services provided by the consulate of Mexico in Philadelphia, or has reached out into the community in order to establish a consistent political dialogue with authorities, business organizations, cultural entities, and community leaders, with the intention of building better relations between Mexico and the Delaware Valley region. And whereas, in his role, Consul Giralt Cabralis has been a leading advocate for immigration reform, language access, and increasing access to government to the Mexican community. And?
Whereas Consul Giralt Cabralis has promoted the economic development of Philadelphia's Mexican community and expanded the region's relationship with Mexico. And whereas Consul Giralt Cabralis has received several proclamations, diplomas, and commendations during his career from elected officials, authorities, and institutions, including the Influential Latino of the Year 2003 by the Inland Empire Hispanic Image Awards in Riverside, California, Latino of the Year 2005 by the North Side Impact Committee in Redlands, California, the Most Influential Latinos Award from Delaware Valley, Most Influential Latinos Foundation, and a Mexican Presidential Award acknowledging his 25 years of service. And?
Now therefore, it be resolved that the Council of the City of Philadelphia recognizes, honors, and celebrates the over 25 years of outstanding public service of Consul Giralt Cabralis has dedicated, and further resolve that a copy of this resolution will be presented to the consulate as evidence of sincero respeto y admiración que le tenemos. Gracias.
The Chair recognizes Council Cabralis for remarks.
Buenos dias. This is most probably the first time that a Mexican consul is saluted with mariachi in this hall. Thank you for that. It's also a small footprint of the presence of the Mexican community in this great city of Philadelphia. Thank you for allowing us to do that. I want to also thank you, our President, Mr. David Clark, Councilwoman Maria Quinones, Councilwoman Helen Jim, Councilman Debo, Councilman Green, for this wonderful opportunity to be here. I live in Philadelphia. On Monday is my last day as a consul of Mexico in Philadelphia, but I have seen a tremendous growth in the presence of the Hispanic community and in particular of the Mexican community in this city. I have seen also something very important, that newcomers are part of the solution and not part of the problem, that the Mexican community have become a member of the greater Philadelphia communities and is working hard for this city, is working hard to educate our kids, is working hard to make business, is working hard to make this city greater. Thank you very much. On behalf of the Mexican community, I receive this commendation with all heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will be moving to our next presentation. And at this time, the Chair recognizes Councilwomen Bass and Gimm, who presented a resolution declaring Johnson House Historic Sites Annual Juneteenth Festival as the Philadelphia Juneteenth Festival. With Onyx Finney and those accompanying her, please join the Council ladies at the podium. And joining the Councilwoman, we also have Councilman Jones, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Taubinberger.
Good morning, everyone. Well, today is a celebration, and as we are planning for Juneteenth, which is this coming Saturday, it is our honor and our pleasure to recognize the folks over at Johnson House who have just done an extraordinary job of recognizing and commemorating this very important and special day, not just for the African-American community, but really for all Americans to know and to be aware of. And so we have here today a resolution, and the title of which is declaring Johnson House Historic Sites Annual Juneteenth Festival as the Philadelphia Juneteenth Festival and recognizing, honoring, and celebrating Juneteenth in Philadelphia as the day when enslaved African-Americans were freed in the United States of America more than 150 years ago.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Just one quick statement, just having been a teacher 20 years ago, I remember taking my fifth grade class to Johnson House on a regular basis and talking about how close history is to us at every moment. And as we remember Juneteenth this weekend, and we certainly hope everybody in Philadelphia joins Johnson House and the celebration there on Saturday all day long, that we remember that the fight continues and the struggle goes on in ways that are deeper, broader, and more important than we thought possible. Whereas on June 19th, 1865, slaves in Galveston, Texas were informed that they were free, long after slaves were freed in all other states. Former slaves coined the phrase "Juneteenth" to celebrate their newfound freedom by combining the month of the occurrence, June, with the day 19th. And?
Whereas located on the corner of Germantown Avenue and Washington Lane in Germantown's neighborhood in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, Johnson House stands as a site where the principles of 1688 Germantown protests against slavery were acted upon and is designated as a national historic landmark. And?
Whereas Philadelphia has a rich history for its significant role in the Underground Railroad and abolitionist movement. The Johnson House was a station and meeting place for other abolitionists, including conductors Harriet Tubman and William Still. And?
Whereas Johnson House Historic Site is a historic house museum and center for civil and social advocacy that represents what everyday people have done and can do to make a difference in their community and beyond the creating, in their community and beyond, by creating interactive educational opportunities, fostering community initiatives, and preserving the historic integrity of the house grounds and outlier buildings. And?
Whereas Johnson House Historic Site will celebrate Juneteenth, the oldest nationally celebrated holiday commemorating the end of slavery.
Israel Johnson managed the Institute for Colored Youth that was dissolved to help create Cheney University. During our pop-up Beer Garden at Juneteenth, we will host the Black Colleges Matter Panel and present this year's Unsung Hero Award to Ina Linder Swain. Johnson House continues to represent what everyday people can do and have done to make a difference. Although some celebs like Snoop Dogg don't want to relive the painful past, while certain presidential candidates rush to return to a dark time in American history, we must tell our stories and celebrate our triumphs. Johnson House's Juneteenth Festival, I mean the Philadelphia Juneteenth Festival, is not an event. It is a celebration steeped in tradition, history, heritage and culture. When you come to celebrate Juneteenth in Germantown, you are entering the womb of freedom. Juneteenth is not just a celebration of our past, it is a reminder that there's still so much left to do. On behalf of the Johnson House Board, that I must say is intergenerational, it's interracial, and it's multicultural, and our board members go from the ages of in their thirties to eighty-five years old. I thank you so very much for this honor and I look forward to seeing all of you at Juneteenth.
Councilor Beattie.
Philadelphia Business Journal and their twenty-sixteen Forty Under Forty class. With Craig I and those accompanying him, please join the Councilman at the podium. And joining Councilman Taubenberger, we have Councilwoman Parker and Councilman Don. And before we proceed, I would like to ask if anyone has an electronic device or even a mechanical device that makes any noise, will you please turn it off? Thank you.
I think it's always very important to recognize the youth, and in this case, they're about twenty years younger than me, and that's all a good thing. And I'm also very honored to have my colleagues, Councilwoman Sherrell Parker, Councilman Don, here with me. This is important, so please take notice. And also, Councilman Don wanted to say a few words before we actually had the proceedings, and he was actually one of the forty at one time, last year, I believe.
Thank you, Councilman Taubenberger. I just wanted to mention that because this is a great event, Forty Under Forty, and I was a member, and it was so long ago that the event was held at Morton's on the side of the Four Seasons, and most of you don't even remember that, but that's where it was held. But the one message I want to send to a lot of the people who I know are behind me is that the importance of businesspeople and the people of Forty Under Forty to get involved in government. And at some point in their career, after you've done really well in business, think about it and try to help our cities. Very important, so thank you.
Councilwoman Parker?
Whereas the Philadelphia Business Journal has published a top forty under forty class since nineteen ninety-one to award the next generation of business leaders. And whereas the Philadelphia Business Journal takes the time each year to highlight the successes and work ethic of young entrepreneurs and?
Whereas the Philadelphia Business Journal receives hundreds of nominations each year and narrows it down to only forty. And whereas the Philadelphia Business Journal selects the top forty under forty based on business success, financial results, career growth, volunteer work, community involvement, and leadership abilities and influence on the quality of life for all and?
Whereas the City of Philadelphia hopes these business leaders will continue to grow their companies, careers and lives here in the City of Philadelphia. Now therefore be it resolved, the Council of the City of Philadelphia hereby recognizes and honors the Philadelphia Business Journal editors, staff, and the Forty Under Forty Class of twenty sixteen for their service to the city in creating a business-friendly atmosphere in the City of Philadelphia. Congratulations.
The Chair recognizes?
The publisher? Editor, editor, I'm sorry. Publisher's a good title.
I was just going to recognize him for remarks. Please for remarks.
We'd like to thank Council President Clark, the entire City Council, and definitely Councilman Taubenberger, Councilman Don, and Councilwoman Parker for honoring the Business Journal and our great two thousand sixteen class of Forty Under Forty. This year, we have more than three hundred nominations for Forty Under Forty, and I can tell you that almost all of them qualified and deserved to be honored. And what a great testament that is to the great things that are happening right here now in Philadelphia. So the Business Journal's Forty Under Forty program is now in its twenty-sixth year, and we've honored one thousand forty people, including Ellen Dunn. And it is really, it's designed to celebrate the career accomplishments of our young honorees, but our selection process is not just all about dollars and cents. What we also look for is a commitment to our community. These are people who love doing business in Philadelphia, in the region, and want to give back. So again, thank you so much for this, for this great honor and resolution, and with great leadership in government and business and in our communities, we're looking forward to a very prosperous future here in Philadelphia. Thank you.
Councilor Beattie. The next order of business is the communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant-at-Arms deliver the messages from the mayor to the Chief Clerk. The Chief Clerk, would you please read the messages from the mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections four six oh four and two three oh seven of the Home War Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers one six oh four five eight, one six oh four five nine, one six oh four six oh, one six oh four six one, one six oh four six three, one six oh four six four, one six oh four six five, one six oh four six six, one six oh five one two, one six oh five one five, one six oh five one six, one six oh five one eight, one six oh five one nine, one six oh five two oh, one six oh five two one, one six oh five two two, one six oh five two five, one six oh five two six, one six oh five two seven, one six oh five two eight, one six oh five two nine, one six oh five five three, one six oh five five five, one six oh five five eight, one six oh five six oh, one six oh five six one, one six oh five six two, one six oh five six three, one six oh five six five, and one six oh five six six. And I am pleased to advise you that on June fourteenth, two thousand sixteen, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on June ninth, two thousand sixteen. Bill number one six oh four six seven.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The Chief Clerk, would you please read any other communications?
I have, I have done, Mr. Chairman.
Next order of business will be the introductions of bills and resolutions. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This morning, I offered two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
A privilege resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council's Special Committee on Student Loan Debt pursuant to Resolution one six oh oh four eight to investigate ways the City of Philadelphia can lessen the burden on student loan debt upon our citizens.
That will be on today's final passage.
And a privilege resolution honoring Nolan and Atkinson Junior and his commitment in fostering the Philadelphia Diversity Law Group, PDLG.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Miss Chair. On behalf of Council President Clark, I offer two bills.
An ordinance authorizing Fishtown Arts and Crafts Doing Businesses Fishtown Social to install, own and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at fifteen twenty-three through twenty-seven Frankfurt Avenue.
That bill will be appropriate to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section nine two oh four of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Center City by eliminating previously designated vendor locations in Center City.
Refer to the appropriate committee. Chair also recognizes Councilman Greenly on behalf of myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your behalf, I offer six bills and one resolution.
Thank you, Councilman. Clerk, would you please read the titles of the bills and resolutions?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Home War Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of the Department of Labor, Employment and Consumer Affairs fixing the date of a special election for such purpose prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on. And an ordinance amending Chapter nine thirty-three hundred of the Philadelphia Code entitled Direction, Use and Inspection of Tower Cranes by adding requirements regulating the use and inspection of mobile cranes. And an ordinance amending Section sixteen one oh three of the Philadelphia Code entitled Aesthetic Ornamentation of City Structures to modify the city's percent for art requirement. And an ordinance amending Subcode PM of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, by revising certain requirements and penalties with respect to maintenance and upkeep of vacant structures and land. And an ordinance amending Title seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by revising and improving the city's contracting and procurement process. And an ordinance amending Title seventeen of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by revising and improving the city's contracting and procurement processes, including by providing for a vendor registry for improved vendor management.
Those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privilege resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Home War Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Labor, Employment and Consumer Affairs.
Resolution will be heard at our next council session. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I offer three privileged resolutions co-sponsored by Blackwell, Green, Johnson, Bass and Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Samuel Staton Junior on his appointment as Vice President of Laborers International Union of North America.
That will be on today's final passage calendar.
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the Father's Day Rally Committee on its efforts and initiatives that have positively impacted the quality of life of African-American communities and men of color in the City of Philadelphia and the Delaware Valley region.
And today's final passage calendar.
And a privilege resolution declaring the week of September eleventh through September seventeenth, Philadelphia Legacy Week, which will be set aside to commemorate those who have made major contributions to the Philadelphia community through their dedication, hard work and creativity.
And today's final passage calendar. That's it. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, have one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of so-
The next order of business is the communications. The Chair requests that the Sergeant at Arms deliver the messages from the Mayor to the Chief Clerk. The Chief Clerk, would you please read the messages from the Mayor?
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Hallmark Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill numbers 160458, 160459, 160460, 160461, 160463, 160464, 160465, 160466, 160512, 160515, 160516, 160518, 160519, 160520, 160521, 160522, 160525, 160526, 160527, 160528, 160529, 160553, 160555, 160558, 160560, 160561, 160562, 160563, 160565, and 160566. And I am pleased to advise you that on June 14, 2016, I signed the following bill, which was passed by Council at its session on June 9, 2016. Bill number 160467.
Thank you. The messages will be printed in the journal. The Chief Clerk, would you please read any other communications?
I have, I have them, Mr. Chairman.
The next order of business will be the introductions of bills and resolutions. Now, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. This morning, I offered two resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
A privilege resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council's Special Committee on Student Loan Debt pursuant to Resolution 160048 to investigate ways the City of Philadelphia can lessen the burden on student loan debt upon our citizens.
That will be on today's final passage.
And a privilege resolution honoring Nolan and Atkinson Jr. and his commitment in fostering the Philadelphia Diversity Law Group, PDLG.
Resolution will be placed on today's final passage. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Council President Clark, I offer two bills.
An ordinance authorizing Fishtown Arts and Crafts Doing Businesses Fishtown Social to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk café at 1523 through 27 Frankfurt Avenue.
That bill will be appropriate to the appropriate committee.
And an ordinance amending Section 9204 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Vendors in Center City by eliminating previously designated vendor locations in Center City.
Refer to the appropriate committee. Chair also recognizes Councilman Greenly on behalf of myself.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On your behalf, I offer six bills and one resolution.
Thank you, Council. Clerk, would you please read the titles of the bills or resolutions?
An ordinance providing for the submission to the qualified electors of the City of Philadelphia of an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter establishing and defining the responsibilities of the Department of Labor, Employment, and Consumer Affairs fixing the date of a special election for such purpose, prescribing the form of ballot question to be voted on. And an ordinance amending Chapter 93300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Direction, Use, and Inspection of Tower Cranes by adding requirements regulating the use and inspection of mobile cranes. And an ordinance amending Section 16103 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Aesthetic Ornamentation of City Structures to modify the city's percent-for-art requirement. And an ordinance amending Subcode PM of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, by revising certain requirements and penalties with respect to maintenance and upkeep of vacant structures and land. And an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by revising and improving the city's contracting and procurement process. And an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by revising and improving the city's contracting and procurement processes, including by providing for a vendor registry for improved vendor management.
Those bills will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a
I'm sorry.
And a non-privilege resolution proposing an amendment to the Philadelphia Hallmark Charter to provide for the creation of a Department of Labor, Employment, and Consumer Affairs.
Resolution will be heard at our next council session. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, I offer three privileged resolutions cosponsored by Blackwell, Green, Johnson, Bass, and Parker.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring Samuel Staton Jr. on his appointment as Vice President of Laborers International Union of North America.
That will be on today's final passage calendar?
And a privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the Father's Day Rally Committee on its efforts and initiatives that have positively impacted the quality of life of African-American communities and men of color in the City of Philadelphia and the Delaware Valley region.
In today's final passage calendar?
And a privilege resolution declaring the week of September 11 through September 17 Philadelphia Legacy Week, which will be set aside to commemorate those who have made major contributions to the Philadelphia community through their dedication, hard work, and creativity.
In today's final passage calendar? That's it? Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, have one bill?
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Jackson Street, Broad Street, the Skookul Expressway I-76, Vera Street, Passianke Avenue, and 24th Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have three privileged resolutions, one non-privileged, and two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
And an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, York Street, Howard Street, and Burke Street.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a privilege resolution, and an ordinance amending Section 9605 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Towing by adding a requirement that an illegally parked vehicle be ticketed prior to its towing from a private parking lot, private property, or driveway except for hospital premises.
Refer to committee.
And a privilege resolution recognizing, honoring, and celebrating Walter Higgins on his over 35 years of dedicated service to the Laborers Local 57.
Today's final passage calendar?
And a privilege resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring the outstanding season of the Frankfurt High School's Pioneer's baseball team and their continued dedication to academics and the community.
In today's final passage calendar?
And a privilege resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring Allne Charter High School's Trojans baseball team and coaching staff on winning the 2016 A-division championship, the Public League Championship, and the 2016 District 12 City Championship.
And that's today's final passage calendar. And the Chair recognizes, no more?
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings to determine whether City Council should establish a Families Oversight Cabinet to review the impact of the City of Philadelphia's operating budgets and matching grants on the city's growing rate of poverty.
And that will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have four privileged resolutions for today.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privilege resolution honoring and celebrating College Possible Philadelphia and its first graduating class of high school students on their many achievements.
And that will be on today's final passage calendar?
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on the Disabled and Persons with Special Needs to hold hearings regarding Pennsylvania Autism Insurance Act of 2008.
Today's final passage calendar?
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the development of co-ops in the City of Philadelphia and initiatives to support their growth.
Today's calendar?
And a privilege resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the potential implications of instituting a city use and occupancy tax to reduce the business income and receipts tax rate.
Also on today's calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one non-privileged resolution cosponsored by yourself, Councilmembers Heenan, Reynolds Brown, Greenly, and Taubenberger.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A non-privileged resolution calling for the creation of a task force on retirement security for private sector employees in Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that the rules be suspended to allow the resolution to be considered on today's final passage calendar.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor? Those opposed, eyes have it. That resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilmen. Chair, I will go back to Councilwoman Blackwell. Thank you.
Why, thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Today, we have one non-privileged resolution cosponsored by Councilman Curtis Jones, Councilman Mark Quilla, David O., Alan Dom, Helen Gemm, Councilman Green, Greenly, Blondell Reynolds Brown, and then signed by each and every member of City Council.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the life of esteemed West Catholic Preparatory High School graduate and rising star basketball player Akir Murray, who tragically lost her life in the Orlando nightclub shooting massacre.
That will be on today's final passage calendar. You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gemm.
Good afternoon, Council President. No bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Good afternoon, Council President and colleagues. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Quilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer four bills and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Then I would like to have recognized after the title the resolution is introduced for a motion.
Thank you.
An ordinance establishing a no-parking regulation on Spur Street between Delaware Avenue and the 38th parallel both sides and rescinding a prior parking regulation. And an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines of grades on a portion of City Plan Number 195 by striking from the City Plan Web Street from Huntington Street to a point approximately 100 feet southwestwardly therefrom. And an ordinance authorizing Franco Bordeaux to construct, own, and maintain an elevated patio encroachment in two parts at 1549 South 13th Street. And an ordinance establishing a Neighborhood Improvement District to be known as the South Ninth Street Area Business District in the area that generally includes properties located on portions of South Eighth Street, South Ninth Street, South Tenth Street, Christian Street, Monroe Street, Carpenter Street, Washington Avenue, Ellsworth Street, East Passianke Avenue, and certain other streets within the area depicted on the preliminary plan, and including curb market stands located along certain of those streets, designating South Ninth Street Area Business District, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district.
Those bills just read by the Chief Clerk will be referred to the appropriate committee.
And a non-privileged resolution initiating action to establish a Neighborhood Improvement District to be known as the South Ninth Street Area Business District.
And the Chair recognizes Councilman Quilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the rules of council be suspended to permit consideration of the resolution on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it. And that resolution will be on today's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Title 6 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Health to require disclosure of lead hazards, including lead service lines and making technical changes.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you, Council President. I offer one resolution cosponsored by Councilmembers Gemm, Taubenberger, Quilla, and Green.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privilege resolution recognizing and honoring the Korean-American veterans of the Vietnam War for their service to the United States.
And that resolution will be on this week's final passage calendar. That concludes our introductions of bills and resolutions. And we will now move to our reports from committee. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for a report from the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee of the Whole reports 10 resolutions out with favorable recommendation.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee of the Whole, to which is referred Resolution Number 160634 entitled a resolution appointing Mark C., read to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And Resolution Number 160635 entitled a resolution appointing Howard Wurzak to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And Resolution Number 160636 entitled a resolution appointing Jeffrey B. Goldstone to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And Resolution Number 160637 entitled a resolution appointing Kevin Nichols to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District. And Resolution Number 160647 entitled a resolution reappointing John Connors to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. And Resolution Number 160648 entitled a resolution appointing Jeff Vuono to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. And Resolution Number 160649 entitled a resolution appointing Ronald Boland to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. And Resolution Number 160650 entitled a resolution appointing Darrell Adams to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. And Resolution Number 160651 entitled a resolution appointing Joseph Cordino to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. And Resolution Number 160652 entitled a resolution appointing Tom Zaff to the Board of Directors of the Center City District. Respectful reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached resolutions to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit consideration of the 10 resolutions just read by the clerk on today's final passage calendar.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Resolution 160634, 160635, 160636, 160637, 160647, 160648, 160649, 160650, 160651, and 160652 on today's final passage calendar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it. Motion carries, and these resolutions will be placed on our final passage calendar today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Greenly for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports two bills with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Rules, which is referred Bill Number 160398, entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 21st Street, Oxford Street, 20th Street, Master Street, and Ridge Avenue. And Bill Number 160460 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Diamond Street, Franklin Street, Burke Street, and Ninth Street. Respectful reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Numbers 160398 and 160460.
Thank you. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160398 and 160460. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it. And these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair now recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell for a report from the Committee on Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Finance reports out one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read that report.
The Committee on Finance, to which is referred Bill Number 160610, entitled an ordinance authorizing the bond committee to sell bonds at public or private negotiated sale to provide funds toward various capital municipal purposes, providing for appropriations to the sinking fund commission for the payment of such bonds, authorizing agreements to provide credit or payment or liquidity sources for the bonds in connection with issuance of the bonds, and certain other actions, providing for obtaining the consent of the electors to increasing the indebtedness of the city, and fixing a day and providing for arrangements for holding the election for obtaining such consent. Respectful reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160610.
Thank you. It has been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 160610. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, eyes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. Chair now recognizes Councilman Jones for a report from the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development reports one bill with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please read your report.
The Committee on Commerce and Economic Development, to which is referred Bill Number 160015, entitled an ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance, Taxes, and Collections to add a chapter requiring businesses located in certain areas of the city where they receive tax or other subsidies from the city to provide certain economic development data to the city, and requiring the publication by the city of such data, all under certain terms and conditions. Respectful reports that is considered the same, and returns the attached bill to council with a favorable recommendation.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Jones.
Mr. President, I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit first reading this day of Bill Number 160015. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it. And this bill will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our reports from committee. And the next order of business is consideration of the calendar. I note that the bills just reported from committee have been deemed to have had a first reading. These bills will be placed on our second reading and final passes calendar at the next session of council, as there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to considering the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. Resolution Numbers 160481A, 160619, 160620, 160621, 160624, 160625, 160627, 160630, 160631, 160632, 160633, 160638, 160639, 160641, 160653, 160654, 160658, 160583, 160584, 160586, 160587, 160588, 160302A, one Oops, I'm sorry. Let me stop at 160588. I went too far. Sorry about that. Yeah, that's right. I didn't realize that was a break in the resolution.
We
Did I say?
160622?
What page, Mr. President?
Um, don't, don't 622?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't say that?
Uh, we had a move in second. You okay?
Yes, second, yes.
Okay. Move in second. It's been moved in properly. Second, that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolutions just read by Councilman Greenly and Heenan. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have it. The motion carries, and we will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair now recognizes Councilman Heenan for a motion concerning the bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Council President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following bills in second, on the second reading and final passage calendars. Bill Number 160302A, 16031, 132A, 160133, 160223, 160272, 160275, 160276, 160299, 160300, 160327, 160328, 160335, 160336, 160369, 160515, 160518, 160521, 160522, 160526, 160402, 160470, 160510, 160523, 160332, 160334, 160366, 160399, 160406, 160463, 160464, 160553, 160554, 160561, 160562, 160563, 160224, 160274, 160363, 160368, 160397, 160403, 160404, 160405, 160459, 160461, 160462 132A, 160133, 160223, 160272, 160275, 160276, 160299, 160300, 160327, 160328, 160335, 160336, 160369, 160515, 160518, 160521, 160522, 160526, 160402, 160470, 160510, 160523, 160332, 160334, 160366, 160399, 160406, 160463, 160464, 160553, 160554, 160560, 160561, 160562, 160564, 160565, 160559, 160557, 160325, 160129, 160364, 160370, and 160333.
Wow. Thanks for sharing. It has been moved in second that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the bills just read by Councilman Heenan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. The motion carries and we will consider the consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions and bills being considered on the consent agendas, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. Bill Numbers 160644, 160659, 160517A, 160138A, 160176, 160173, 160174, 160175, 160552, 160170, 160171, 160172, 160471, 150511, and 160311. All bills and resolutions are being held. Think that was a typo. I want to go back and say that 160511 as opposed to 150511.
Thank you.
Mr. President, point of information, the last bill that I wanted to read for clarification is 160311 for the record.
Thank you. Thank Councilman. The record shall reflect that. 331. Okay.
Take it boxed. All right. So what is it? 160...
3.
331.
Correct. Thank you. Thank Councilman. The record shall reflect that. Um... Our next... Our next order of business is a public comment session. I would ask that you bear with me as we work this out because understandably we have a significant number of individuals on the list. Hopefully, we'll be able to work this out. I'm sure that there will be some people who will not be happy with the conclusion. But the simple reality is that I'm going to read the rules as I knew that this would come up. Um... The council rules with respect to public comment. Each resident or taxpayer who wishes to provide public comment shall be limited to three minutes, which we always do. It sets time and period as the president shall announce. The president may place additional reasonable limitations, and I want you to hear that word, reasonable limitations on public comment to permit council to conduct its meetings and to maintain order, including limiting repetitious comments. So I fully anticipate when we look at this, there will be a significant amount of limited repetitious comments. Um, all due respect, we have heard a lot about at least two of these bills, so we will try to work out as good as many as possible. Okay. What we're going to do, um... Pay attention, please. Um, what we're going to do, we're going to proceed with the non-beverage slash soda slash whatever we're calling it today. Uh... It keeps changing every evolving situation. We're going to proceed with those, um, comments that don't relate to that, that relate to other matters, and then we're trying to work out the schedule on who's going to testify on those bills. Those bills are resolutions. So, Mr. Decker, we can start out with this list?
Yeah. Please.
Okay. We're going to start on the non-beverage slash soda tax-related comments.
The following individuals can approach the podium commenting on 160300, 160302A, and 160518A. Followed by Richard Glyniak. Followed by Tiffany Green. Followed by Teresa McCormick. Followed by Maria Ortiz.
Okay. So let me state, um, in terms of the... Excuse me, folks. Pay your attention, please. In terms of the public comment session, um, when your names are called, uh, you obviously go to the podium in the middle of the council session, council chambers. There's a device. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks. When the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines and conclude your remarks. You'll be given three minutes each. Thank you. Did you... Mr. Decker, did you call all five of them? Are those all five? Any of those?
Ms. Shakumba?
I'm here.
Yeah. Thank you. Please proceed, Ms. Shakumba.
Okay. Uh, Council President, uh, President Darrell Clark and other members of council, I come before today to speak on board bills, really. They are considered for passage. They deal with... I will allow residential development on Washington Avenue. These bills are 160300, 160302, and 160518. I've also added Bill Number 160176. Uh, we feel that we are being discriminated against because we are poor and handicapped and low moderate income living in this residential area, which is north of Washington Avenue. I represent NOWAC, North of Washington Avenue, which is a registered community organization. We share the same values as Sosna. Neither NOWAC nor any of the other organizations was informed about the passage of these zoning deals, nor were we provided with any information until these deals were already made. These projects are too big for a few people living within 200 feet to be the sole deciders on what is to be built. Uh, these projects will affect our entire area, okay? And we are opposed to, right now, to having CMX3 and IRMX introduced without full community impact and full community information. I don't know if you know anything about the famous French writer Cory Milzola, who published in 11, 1898 accusing the French government of improprieties, a letter said of Jacques Coûts, which means I... in English, IQs. Therefore, on behalf of the NOWAC community and I, I make these accusations. We accuse the administration, Councilwoman Johnson, and various members of city council of continuing what previous administrations have done, and that is to show an acute indifference to the poor, handicapped, low and moderate income people, residents living in the city, and failing to provide us with adequate housing. We accuse you of continuing to cast us, low and moderate income people, aside from wealthy interests. We accuse you of continuing to exclude us from negotiating process when it comes to developing housing in this city. We accuse you of continuing to allow blatant exclusion of black and brown people and people of color from jobs by not enforcing city legislation on the building trades to enable them to secure employment. We accuse you of continuing to allow developers to ignore the poor margin income people in this city. We accuse you of using the poor, poverty-stricken, disadvantaged children living in poverty-stricken neighborhoods as bait to obtain approval for a proposed sugar tax to fix the city's budget gap. The sugar tax was proposed and promoted as provided PK instruction for the 17,000 kids living in Philadelphia. What we want, we want to be treated with respect. We want to be inclusion, not exclusion. We want equal treatment and end to economic discrimination and suppression. We want to be treated humanely and with dignity. We want our voices heard and not suppressed or ignored. We want a percentage of low and moderate income and handicapped housing to be included in any project and development coming in this city. We want commitment that these projects will include a percentage of low and moderate income. We want an increase in the employment of people of color and men and women on these projects and enforcement of existing laws and not this so-called best efforts. We want development without displacement. Okay? We want money generated from the sugar tax to be used solely for the funding of PK, as it was stated. And we want legislation introduced that will provide for the public audit and the full disclosure of how this money is being spent. That is what we want and that's what we asking for. We feel for respect request that Bill 160300, 160302A, and 160518 be placed on hold and that we do favor passage of the sugar tax bill with the provisions noted. Thank you.
Commenting on 160300, 160302A, and 160518A.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Uh, good morning or good afternoon. In order for a city to be a leader or a global leader, it's how they treat their... it's how you treat your poor. And right now, these bills that have been passed, we have a real concern because the Bill 160302 will allow build condominiums on Washington Avenue, and it takes away the RCO process, the community process, and the community vote. My concern is we have council people who say they're champions for the children and for the poor. So therefore, why is there not an opposition vote on the floor right now? You can't say you're a champion for poor and the children, and yet you allow that this particular bill that will take away the right to have a say in your community and build condominiums that will push out 500 to 2,000 families in South Philadelphia. This point... At this point, if our councilman want to continue to cater to the rich and affluent, then let him do that. But we have 16 other or other council people who can vote opposed to this. We cannot allow poor people to continue to be mistreated like this. I have a real serious problem with the fact that you created the RCO process and made it a law, but now you're going to take it away from us and allow them to be able to build. We can't even discuss design, parking, not even the time that they open or close. How could you sit here and take that away from us? I am standing here and I am livid at this particular point. But I say this because you cannot continue to take money out of the poor. I come from a family who taught me how to be confident and ability to say no. And if we have someone who's not going to represent us at this particular point, then it's up to us to take it. This day, you sat here and passed this bill, and this bill is hurtful. But you know what? In the words of "Going with the Wind," tomorrow is another day. At this particular point, I am so sick and tired of hearing all in favor say aye. It cringes my stomach not to see individuality on this floor. But I tell you what, from here on, all of you, at this vote today, it says to me, all in favor to take money out of poor people pockets with this sugar tax. All in favor to take money to remove our rights of the poor to have a say in our community, you're all in favor to say that Phil... It's okay for Philadelphia to be to have the highest poverty rate in the country. It's okay for you... You all in favor to say that Philadelphia will be the number one broke, busted, and disgusted, uh, city in America. I refuse to let you sit here and disrespect the poor. But I know one thing, no weapon formed against us shall prosper.
Thank you for your testimony.
Teresa McCormick.
Good afternoon.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Marie Ortiz. I live in the South Philadelphia area. I am terribly upset of what's going on in our area with these bills, 160300, 160302, 16580. It is disgusting how we are being treated as human. And also with the soda tax, and also with all the taxes in the area that they want to increase. We talk about there's no money in the city, but we got an $18 million house or Rittenhouse Square has not paid taxes. Why don't we get taxes from those who get in the community that don't pay taxes and get taxes from them? Council get raises in their taxes. People in high official get raises, but people of the working class, low income, that's working hard to put food on our table to serve you in your home as butlers, housekeeper, or whatever, don't get raises or vacation. I'm being mistreated. This is not justice in the United States. I'm also upset because we call ourselves people that deserve better, but this is a new form of slavery for everyone of all colors. As far as the other taxes in our area, we need to sit down and have talk with people of the community, not people at high levels. You need to come out and spend a day or get one of your pay a month once a year to see what's going on and live on the salary we deserve or live on the salary that we do not have. Also, the schools. Dr. Hyatt came from another district. If he is so great, why did he come from another district and Philadelphia hire him? All I see are schools going down. We're not recouping. We're not getting anything. And as far as that, I think as far as people getting raises, they should not get no raises if they don't do their job. And that goes for all portions of the action. Thank you and have a nice day.
Thank you for your testimony.
Commenting on 160175.
Yes. Um, my name's Robert Burge. Thank you, Council, for letting me... Uh, thank you for letting me... We have a serious problem here with this wage tax going... We have a serious problem here with this wage tax going up. I know, um, we're going to lose a lot of businesses if we don't be careful with this. I seen it in other cities, and we're losing businesses. Uh, this morning, I went by two empty stores on Market Street, uh, because they just closed down because they can't afford the taxes or can't afford the rents and the taxes. We need to be careful. I know it's a point in that we have these taxes, but please, uh, a lot of the, a lot of the employees are leaving town. Also, the, it's not fair to, like the people say, it's not fair to the employees, uh, that has to pay these taxes also. Um, it's very hard for people to, uh, uh, pay these taxes. Um, I, I know for myself, I'm trying to get a new job here in the city, and a lot of the, a lot of the people, a lot of the employees are going outside the city and bringing in employees. Um, and, and that's not good for the people that live here in Philadelphia, like myself. Um, we need to be very careful with that, uh, wage tax and net profit because the small business, it's not just the large businesses, it's the small businesses that we have to, uh, uh, look at. Um, because the small businesses, their profit, everything is going up, the cost of living, um, the cost of operating, uh, the cost of, uh, uh, employment, um, hiring people, and also the cost of just products, uh, the, the bringing in certain things. Um, I know a friend of mine has a restaurant over on Third Market. Um, it closed down last year. It was a pizzeria right on the corner because it couldn't afford the rent and the, uh, uh, employment. So we need to be careful with that.
Thank you for your testimony, sir. Ms. Rashid.
Good morning.
Morning. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Majida Rashid. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of the Knightstown CDC, and I want to thank you for allowing me to give my testimony this morning on bill 160115. The Knightstown CDC has been working diligently in the community since we were founded in 1999, and we fulfill our mission with a holistic and inclusive approach that prioritizes community organizing through reeducation and training, neighborhood planning, public health and safety, affordable housing development, commercial car revitalization, land management, and arts and culture. The Knightstown CDC staff works with local stakeholders to investigate, um, nuisance In our service area for our Neighborhood Advisory Committee program, we serve six neighborhoods that have been faced with the challenges of these nuisance establishments. These establishments are often blighted and responsible for attracting loiterers, illicit behavior, open-air drug sales, and pose serious safety and health issues in our neighborhood. We receive numerous reports about nuisance establishments from community residents and businesses, our NAC office, as well as local RCOs, and these reports have increased significantly over the past few years. These reports range from operating hours violations to seniors being afraid to go in where crowds regularly gather to gamble, drink beer, alcohol, and smoke marijuana. We do know that our councilwoman Cindy Bass and her staff have always paid attention and worked diligently to address the problems related to these nuisance establishments in her district. Case in point, a couple months ago, one of my staff called me to report a lot of police presence in front of Councilwoman Bass's district office. I happened to be driving in the area and recognized some of her staff and police officers from the 35th and 39th Police District, and I also saw our LNI Commissioner Perry. So I was really interested then, really kind of newsy. I got out of my car and walked over to ask them what was going on, and they said they were about to conduct random raids or assessments of reported nuisance establishments. They asked me did I want to go with them, and I said yes. Um, we went to three different sites. One was a stop-and-go in Broad and Wingah Hocking, one was a scrapyard in Germantown, and one was a so-called auto repair shop. All three had such deplorable conditions, and the LNI Commissioner himself said he thought he had seen it all before, but was astonished to find what he did at these sites. Unfortunately, these conditions do not only exist in the 8th Council District, but throughout the city. And this is why I'm here today, to encourage you to support the approval of bill number 160115. It's time for the city to put some teeth in the laws that exist and include the language of this bill, which will hold nuisance business owners and managers accountable. This bill will have an immediate impact on improving the quality of life, health, and safety in our shared constituencies. Thank you again for giving me this opportunity to comment.
Joe Dennehy. Commenting on 160481A, 160620, 160623, 160625, 160619, 160621, 160624, 160627, and 160631.
This is the representative form of government, you and council representatives of the people's will, and if asked, must produce evidence to back up the way you vote. My property at 1038 West Wyoming was sequestered for 18 years under a bait and switch that was allowed, that was to allow a shopping mall in lieu of relocation. In 2012, the sheriff, the RDA, and others in this government changed the deed and leveled my home without payment that is constitutionally required. When council was notified of violations to federal law 42 U.S.C. 1982, 1983, 1985, 1986, and others, council is fiduciarily required to stop funding and using the RDA, sheriff, and courts, DA's office, and others until the serious breach of the Constitution is corrected. There has been no movement from the council to correct illegal and without due process property deed transfers. Council continues its relationship with the RDA, sheriff, courts, and others involved. Audit the RDA, sheriff, courts, and the DA's office now. You, as representatives of the people, are required by law to follow the will of the people. I ask the people in this room, have you authorized your representative to steal my home and others, 1038 West Wyoming Avenue, and pay a contractor up to $100 million to build a commercial property on top of what used to be my home? Hearing nobody saying that they've authorized you to act. Council now has the people's authority to act, defund, investigate now, these agencies. The city just might find the missing millions that could fund the schools.
Thank you for your testimony.
A.T. McNeil Senior. Commenting on 160644.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I thank City Council for setting up these meetings, and I thank the people for coming today to hear about, uh, the resolution, yeah, uh, Resolution 160644, a resolution to stop Donald Trump. Uh, I pray that this bill or resolution will be passed because anyone present that have watched television and all the other, uh, press, uh, TV ads on Donald Trump know that something must be done. David stopped Goliath with a rock when the whole people of Israel was afraid. As we do the Stop Trump Now campaign, we see that 99% of the people that we talk with are afraid. So you cannot be a City Council representative unless you show intelligence. You cannot be a representative of the people, whether it's religious. For, in the Constitution of Pennsylvania, it states that we, the people of the Commonwealth, grateful to Almighty God for the blessing of civil and religious liberty. I come today under exercising of my religious liberty to ask you without sale, denial, or delay, as it states in Article 1, Section 11 of the Declaration of Rights. It says, "Man's remedy: Every man for an injury done him in his land, goods, person, or reputation, shall have remedy, compensation, for injury, without sale, denial, or delay." You, the representatives of the people of the great city of Philadelphia, when you pass this resolution, you are saying to Donald Trump, when you come to Philadelphia, be on your best behavior, because if you say anything to insinuate a riot or to injure anyone, we have a orange jumpsuit for you, and we have plenty of space on State Road. Stop Trump now. Stop Trump now. We know about the great song of the year.
Sir.
What is the great service.
Sir.
Speaking of the year, yes.
Your opinion matters, however, we have a clock to honor, so we ask that you finish.
I ask you to pass this without sale, denial, or delay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wayne Ramon. Commenting on 160644.
Good afternoon. I just got a brief comment to say, um, to my friends here in City Council. Um, I haven't been here in a while, and I kind of miss coming down here. But I do want to say that the tax that the administration is talking about, I'm so sad that a lot of my friends in South Lee might not agree with me, but hey, that's the way it is. This tax is very important. Number one, it's for the children. For the children, it's for the children. And number two, they are children here in Philadelphia. And number three, the teachers. Often, when I go to bed at the aft-, in the evening, at night, I try to check, I try to catch as much news as I can. One forgotten hero, unsung hero out there, is the schoolteachers. I don't work for the schoolteachers, I don't work for the union, but the schoolteachers are the last people I hear when I go to sleep. We don't have enough supplies. That really bothers me. It bothers me greatly. Now, I know I'm an ex-Marine in Vietnam and all that, but that really bothers me, because I remember as a little kid at Kelly Junior High School in Vox, we had enough material for the teachers to go into the classroom and bring the stuff out for us to work with. When I walk and drive through different areas of Philadelphia, I'm talking, I love all Philly. I was raised in North and South, but I love all Philly. I watch the teachers struggling to their buildings. Some neighborhoods are not that great, but we're going to make it great, anyway. Struggling to their classrooms, loaded down with materials that they have to reach into their pocket and pay for this materials, that's a sad situation for me, and it should be a sad situation for us. Thank you very much.
I'm going to ask Michael to tee up the next individual so that we can, um, utilize, utilize our time more efficiently.
Followed by Nichelle Kennedy.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Beverly Chandran, born, raised, and educated here in Philadelphia. I am a product of the Philadelphia Public School System, first graduating class of Martin Luther King High School in West Oak Lane, and a graduate of the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania. I'm a Realtor, eight years, four years in Philadelphia, and four years in the Washington, DC area. And for two years, I have been a volunteer member of the GPAR Government Affairs Committee. Real estate is my third career, and I chose it because it allows me to educate people of all economic backgrounds on how to make sound choices as to where to purchase real estate for their primary residence, but also to utilize real estate as a tool to create wealth. No doubt, there is a need to fix and repair homes, but to increase the cost of doing a real estate transaction is making the proposition of owning a home for low and middle-income residents, a great majority of the city's population, unaffordable. It is wonderful to see the real estate market booming in Philadelphia, and it is quite sad to see the cost of doing a transaction being the reason so many hard-working Philadelphians, born and raised here, cannot afford to purchase a home because of the fees associated with closing costs, specifically the real estate transfer fee. The issue is, the issue associated with not being able to purchase a home is not because of the buyer's credit rating, nor is it the issue because of a buyer not being able to get a mortgage with a low interest rate. The issue has become the fees associated with doing the transaction. The fees are already keeping a lot of low-to-middle-class people from purchasing a home. I realize that many people are upset with the real estate boom in Philly, angry about the price of real estate, as well as gentrification as a result of real estate, two very valid concerns. But let's not forget that to purchase even a 150,000 to 200,000 home will cost anywhere from 13 to 17,000 dollars with a FHA mortgage, and significantly higher for a conventional mortgage. A few points. A 150 to 200,000 dollar home is almost considered low-income housing, given how much the prices of real estate has risen in Philly in the last five years.
Good afternoon, Ms. Chandran. Regrettably, we do have to honor the clock, and so we need you to finalize your remarks as the bell has rung.
And celeruses is a thing of the past. In closing, I hope I have encouraged members of the City Council to do more diligence and find another revenue source with a housing repair and preservation program instead of increasing the real estate tax. Thank you for listening.
Nichelle Kennedy. Commenting on 160471.
Thank you, Mr. Council President and the members of council. My name is Nichelle Kennedy. I'm also a Realtor with Greater Philadelphia Association of Realtors, and I respectfully urge you to vote against bill number 160471. I wholeheartedly support the effort to address secure, safe, healthy, and affordable homes for our city's residents. However, increasing taxes for property owners while incurring additional bond debt is something the city cannot afford. Funding should come from collecting delinquent taxes, assessing properties appropriately, and reducing government inefficiencies. An increase to the realty transfer tax makes housing less affordable for our clients, who live or move into each and every section of Philadelphia. We walk through each step of the home buying and selling process with our clients. It's an emotional and a stressful journey on both sides of the process. We work with first-time homebuyers as they take one of life's biggest and scariest steps. We help the senior citizen as they transition to a new phase in life, and we provide assistance to clients when heartbreaking life challenges do occur. Our clients are the residents of Philadelphia, and we are advocating on their behalf. The tax increase will have the greatest impact on our senior, low-income, and millennial clients. It hurts fixed-income senior citizens who have spent a lifetime building equity into their home by making them surrender an additional portion of their equity to taxes when they down- downsize to a smaller home or senior living arrangement. To a much greater extent, this tax increase will be the burden of the low-income and millennial first-time homebuyers. Most first-time homebuyers struggle to qualify for mortgages and save for the down payments. And they have to pay premiums because of the lack of credit and are often required to purchase mortgage insurance. Upfront costs are the biggest obstacles to homeownership for first-time and low-income buyers. For every 1% increase needed for a down payment, home affordability decreases by up to 70% for potential homebuyers. The amount of these fees and taxes involved in closing-cost transactions only compounds the would-be homebuyer's financial stressors. I just urge that you guys vote against this because 1% to you is an additional $800, $900, $1,000 for somebody who's already trying to only come up with $7,000 to purchase a home. We're making them stay a renter for the rest of their lives, and it's not fair. It's not fair to any of them. You guys can find a different way.
Ms. Kennedy?
Can I just have one second?
We do have a clock to honor, and so I need you to wrap it up.
Just one second. Okay. You guys are all intelligent. I'm pretty sure that you can find a different means of coming up with this money. I personally know of investors who owe over $200,000 in real estate taxes. You guys sit there and tell them, "Oh, they can't have a building permit." What do they do? They go get one of their friends to get a building permit. Oh, you say they can't buy from the sheriff's cells? What do they do? They find somebody to buy from the sheriff's cells for them. There has to be another way.
Ms. Kennedy, thank you for your important opinion.
Madam Chair, if I may, I just want to reemphasize the consideration of time as we give public comment today because the list is quite long. We want to make sure that all citizens get their fair chance and opportunity to speak.
Well-taken, Majority Leader. Proceed, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Walter Spencer. I live in the Rittenhouse Square community. I'm here today to testify on behalf of Bill 160138, which requires a tax compliance certificate to receive a building permit. I can tell you that when I was living in Massachusetts in the early 1980s, and the state had serious financial problems, they implemented a similar rule, or similar statute, actually, that required anyone gaining benefit from the state to either concurrent on their taxes or be in a payment plan. In six months after that law took effect, the state received $100 million in delinquent payments that were owed, and there were additional delinquent payments made under the payment plans. So given the needs of both the school system and the Department of Human Services, I recommend passage of this bill.
Commenting on 160659.
Hello, my name is Hannah Sasseman. I'm speaking on my own behalf and on behalf of my rising public school kindergartner, and I'm speaking in support of a true performance audit of the Philadelphia Parking Authority. I was personally shocked to learn that the PPA is required to be paying resources to our public schools and hasn't been doing so. The PPA is a $240 million agency whose contributions to schools have plummeted from $14 million in 2012 to a projected $8 million in 2017. This is happening while I know that all of us are paying more in fees and taxes to the PPA as drivers and as consumers. And so if revenues have risen, why have resources to the School District of Philadelphia plummeted so much? My daughter's school, fellow school parents at the school she'll be attending in the fall raise over $100,000 each year personally to fund art, music, and other resources for our kids. And so if the PPA is considering legalizing Uber and Lyft in the city in an effort to get more money into their pockets, we absolutely need a true performance audit of the PPA that's just basic good governance. Council expects us of every other agency, and we're not sure why our kids should get any less. So I'm saying, please audit the PPA, and if the PPA also is going to be regulating Uber and Lyft in Philadelphia, please ensure that drivers of those cars are protected with all the basic resources they need, and that all riders, including riders with disabilities, can use those cars. Thank you very much.
Commenting on 160658.
Thank you. I will be brief. I think many of you know me. I happen to be a National Officer of something known as the Special Forces Association, which is a organization which is essentially, it's a VFW, but it's reserved for people who are Green Berets. So for us, this, how we treat Third World Nationals who fought for us, generally what we're saying is they fought for Green Berets because it was our responsibility to train, organize, and equip and lead them. Mountain Yards, who are a part of, who would be, come within the ambit of this statute, are people that I fought and bled with. Think Band of Brothers, okay? They were our men, they had my back, I had theirs. We have an obligation to them because they relied upon us, our word, that we would be there with them if they were stood with us. And quite frankly, we abandoned them. We're talking about people who are at the very, very end of the food chain in terms of being very lucky to get out of that place after, like Vietnam fell. So do I think that we have an obligation to them? Absolutely. But there's a very practical reason why, in addition to a moral obligation, that we should honor commitments to Third World Nationals who fight for us. And that's because we need them now. As an ally, we are a very, very poor partner. Since World War II, we've, since Korea, we've abandoned virtually everybody who's fought with us. Today, there are special forces teams in Afghanistan. One of my best friend's sons just got back. When we talk about, "Oh, we're going to send special ops, and that's going to be a combat multiplier, and we're not going to need conventional forces to combat terror," what we are talking about are using Third World Nationals. Why would somebody fight for us if we don't recognize what they have done for us? It won't happen. They will be subject to, I mean, here, communists were part of the force that we worked with. They said, "Hey, guess what? America's going to Phoebe Vietnam, and you're going to be in the lurch." And that was true. If we maintain that attitude, then we won't get people to come fight with us, and we need allies for a number of reasons. So to support anything that says that, yes, we recognize a obligation and we will fulfill a partnership, is a good thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The next, the next 10 testifiers are here to give us your say on the soda tax. So let me remind you that as much as we want you to have your say, we will have to have our way with the clock. Please honor the clock. Proceed, Michael.
Will the first five individuals approach the podium and line up along the wall by the podium in this order? Yvette Hill Robinson. Yvette Hill Robinson.
Proceed.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Yvette Hill Robinson, a lifelong friend of libraries in general, and a friend of the Overbrook Park Library in particular. There is a magic inside of the Overbrook Park Library located at Haverford and Woodbine. It is a one-stop, lifelong learning communication center for our neighborhood. It is a safe place where our children in our neighborhood know that they can go after school. It is not uncommon to hear one yell down the street, "Make sure somebody saves a seat for me." It is because of the library that these students are excited to prepare for tests, get help with their homework, attend a book club, a coding class, work on the garden, participate as a book buddy, spending time with their friends in place with caring, with caring adults they see every day. However, on May 26, the library closed due to a broken air conditioning system. That afternoon, it was, it was heartbreaking to see students gathered outside the doors, staring past the close sign, trying to look inside. They looked around at each other, frantically confused, unsure what they were supposed to do next. Many of them had nowhere to go, as this was where they spend their time after school, and they were not in a position to travel to another library outside of their neighborhood. This was disheartening, as Overbrook Park Library is more than a neighborhood library, it's the heart of the community, it's their safe place. The Friends of the Overbrook Park Library learned that the library would be closed until July 4. We were terrified that this would mean for our community, for the people who rely on the library. Remembering the library was also closed last summer, we knew that we could not let these children miss another summer of library activities. With only one week's notice, we rallied the entire community together in order to move the summer reading kickoff celebration to a nearby recreation center and playground. Additionally, we feared for how the young people would be spending their time now that they were not able to go to the library after school. There was one man, young man in particular, who we knew would only stay outside of trouble because he was engaged at the library every day after school. During the library's closure, members of the Friends Group, we have observed regularly, found this young man on his way to or engaged in unsafe activities. We have tried to serve as mentors to him and encouraged him to help.
Ma'am, the clock has spoken twice, so we have to ask you to finish.
Counsel President Clark, Leader Cannon, members of City Council, my name is Ken Margulies. I serve as the President of the Board of the American Heart Association of Southeastern Pennsylvania. I'm an academic cardiologist at Penn Medicine. I see the medical consequences and human impact of cardiovascular disease every day. At this historic moment for public health, I wish to convey the deep heartfelt appreciation and gratitude of the American Heart Association and the American Stroke Association for council's courage as you vote to pass the country's most significant sugary drink tax. Through your actions, through your actions, Philadelphia will experience a reduced incidence of diabetes, heart disease, obesity, and strokes.
To those who are in this chamber, this, this is an opportunity for folks to have their say. Everyone deserves our silence while we allow them to have their say, because you get a chance to have your say as well. If you care to speak, please sign up. Proceed, citizen.
Through your actions, Philadelphia will experience a reduced incidence of diabetes, heart disease, obesity, and strokes, while promoting citywide pre-K education, park and recreation center improvements, and the health and quality of life benefits that these worthy programs entail. On a broader level, our city is at the vanguard of essential public health efforts across America by demonstrating what is possible, as our country grapples with alarming trends in obesity and type 2 diabetes. In the years ahead, our city will be able to report that hundreds, even thousands, of Philadelphians avoided a number of chronic diseases thanks to what you will do today. Those Philadelphians and their families may not have the chance to thank you for your leadership, so I will. Thank you. As Philadelphia has done, time and again, you are acting boldly to deal with very real concerns and needs of Philadelphians and our country as a whole. What you do here today and your leadership will resonate citywide and beyond. So thank you, on behalf of the American Heart Association, the Philadelphia Medical Community, and the broader American medical establishment.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Rob Santiago. I'm a resident of Philadelphia for 39 years. I would like to thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today, to express my point, point of view on the grocery tax. I've been an employee of Pepsi-Cola for 19 years, and then at that time, I've, I've had several roles there, selling and service roles. My current role is working in an inner-city, dealing with primarily Spanish store speaking store owners. It is because of this that I stand here before you today. Many, if not all, of my customers have expressed a disapproval of the passage of this tax. However, they feel intimidated to stand before you because of their limited ability to effectively communicate in English, their concerns with the passage of this tax. Therefore, I come before you as their advocate. They have all signed petitions, they have all called your offices to voice their opinions, and they oppose this tax. My job in dealing with these customers every day is to ensure service along providing great products, mostly importantly, my job is to bring value to the final consumer, your constituents. A year, because of the price and language barriers, all of my customers purchase their products from wholesalers and distributors that only offer a limited variety of products. They are accustomed to traveling to, to find a deal on products for their stores. Through discounts, customer agreements, and overcoming the language barrier, I can provide options to our customers by selling them various products like juice, water, iced tea and coffee, isotonic drinks, and of course, a wide variety of carbonated soft drinks. By enhancing this tax, my ability to offer our consumers their value within their neighborhood stores will be impossible. The owners of these stores will return to the old ways of finding options to supply their store that will probably lead them outside the city confines to get the lowest price and max, and also to maximize the profits. This will limit the variety of product offerings within the city stores, which will include non-carbonated healthier options. What this will also limit is the revenue that you seek by imposing this tax. As I stand for you, they are not adverse to traveling out of the city to support their stores, to stock their store shelves. The amount of revenue that you are, that you will yield from this tax will decline over time and will not sustain your long-term goals. It will also cost jobs such as mine, reduce options in the corner stores that I service, which will also reduce the health benefits that you seek. Before you vote today, please ask.
Sir? 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 If you kind of wrap it up, your time's up.
Good afternoon, member, I'm good? Good afternoon, members of council. My name is George Matysik. I'm Executive Director of the Philadelphia Parks Alliance. As we've all heard, the Council President Clark begins every council meeting by welcoming folks to see their government in action, their local government in action. But for most Philadelphians who can't make it down to council, aside from seeing your trash picked up once a week, aside from expecting somebody to show up when you dial 911, their local government in action.
their local government in action is at our parks, our rec centers, and our libraries. Sites that are literally falling apart around us, and that’s what they’re seeing in their local government in action. With the passing of the soda tax, with the passing of the soda tax to fund rebuild, we can stop looking at our rec centers as just athletic centers and begin looking at them as what they can be, community centers that can invest directly into our neighborhoods. Today’s vote can be historic for many reasons, many reasons. We can make a lot of national news, but as historic as it is for you on council, it would be even more historic for that kid at Happy Hollow Rec Center, or Cecil B. Rec Center, or Longcrest Rec Center, or the kid waiting in line for pre-K. It would be historic for them, for the underserved communities in our city. And that is our local government in action, and so I urge you all to support Bill 160176 and pass the soda tax. Thank you very much.
Hello, Mr. President, council and guests. My name is Chris Hunter. Thank you for allowing me the time to share my thoughts and concern of this proposed beverage tax. I’m a current resident of the far northeast for over 20 years and an employee of Coca-Cola. First, the proposed beverage tax would hurt the livelihood of myself and my son. My son, who is currently enrolled in Philadelphia Public Schools in the system, and attended pre-K in his early years, he loved it. Yes, every child should have the opportunity, however, not on the backs of hard-working Philadelphians in one industry. I would love to continue raising him in the city he was born and raised. However, Mayor Kenny’s bad idea proposal of a beverage tax could dash and hurt those dreams because I possibly may lose my job. Counsel, please give me pointers on how to explain this to my son. Second, several of my employees would be also affected by this beverage tax and could lose their jobs should this pass. These employees have families too and are middle-class, working, living paycheck to paycheck, paying taxes just like you and I. Don’t trust their dreams of living in the American dream. These jobs are good-paying, middle-class jobs that could leave the city, who I remind you pay wage taxes now gone. Not to mention these companies possibly taking operations outside of city limits. What would that cost the city? Bad idea. Philadelphia needs to keep jobs in Philly. Last, if this tax is passed, Philadelphia would create the worst black market for non-alcoholic beverages since prohibition, which was back in the 1920s and 30s. Let’s not go back in history. Similar to the cigarette tax, which fell $20 million short of what city officials projected, beverage tax would cost even worse shortfalls, the black market. City would have no control of collecting any tax. Finally, as a taxpayer of the city, I already pay some of the highest taxes in the country. I pay a tax on wages, property, sales, income, and an increased utility tax, just to name a few. This was rejected twice before and should be for a third time. As city leaders of Philadelphia, when are you going to say enough is enough? Thank you.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Calla Bush St. George. I live in Councilwoman Bass’s district, and I want to thank you all for allowing me to be here. I am here today to testify in support of the sugar-sweetened beverage tax because it is imperative that this tax gets passed today. This tax hits me on a very personal note. When I was young, I was fortunate that my mom could send me to pre-K. I had a chance to get ahead academically, and when I entered kindergarten, my teachers could tell. Those years when I was three and four prompted my academic success. I am currently a senior at JR Masterman High School, and this fall I will start at Swarthmore College. As a product of pre-K, I can see its importance, and I urge that others are given the same chance as me so that what I have achieved becomes the norm in Philly public schools, not the exception. The main opposition to the soda tax, besides that from the soda manufacturing companies, is saying that it will disproportionately affect the poor and people of color. I understand that you do not want to pass a tax that hurts those who have already been hurt, but you have been misled by this argument. This tax will help, not hurt, low-income families. My family has come from poverty, and my aunts and uncles lived a life I can only imagine, and today they are facing the repercussions of their lack of nutritional education. Most everyone in my family up to this year who has died has died from a health-related cause. When my mom was growing up, there was no money to spare, so cheap sugary drinks were what were bought. Although they were inexpensive, the diabetes that has wrecked my family’s lives and my aunt’s is not. The heart attacks, the strokes, the hospital visits, the funerals were due to a poor diet, a diet enabled by the cheapness of the drinks they drank. This tax will save lives, and it would have saved so many lives in my family. I am here today to shed insight as a product of pre-K, as a student at a Philadelphia public high school, and as someone whose loved ones live in pain every day due to the sugary drinks they consume. Thank you for listening to me. Have a nice day.
Good afternoon. First and foremost, thank you for this opportunity. Again, my name is Orlando Cruz, and I was born and raised in Philadelphia. As a resident and Philadelphia taxpayer, I’m so disappointed with the city’s council’s decision to pass this one and a half cent per ounce beverage tax in our great city. Philadelphia is one of the greatest cities in the country, yet its citizens also pay some of the highest taxes in this country. I know I don’t need to remind the city council that we are also one of the poorest cities in the United States. Now, after months of debate over the impact that this tax will have on the people living in the poorest communities, the city wants to implement this beverage tax. The mayor sold this bill of goods as money for the kids, as a way to expand pre-K and as a way to upgrade recreation centers in Philadelphia. Now, while some of that might get accomplished, we cannot turn a blind eye to the fact that we just found out that $41 million in beverage tax revenue will now support fund balance. I ask you all today, do you really believe this was all about the kids? As many of the council members in this room know, this tax will have a major negative impact on small business owners that depend on the residents of their community to help keep them in business. My fear is that many of my friends’ businesses will be forced to close. How about the small mom-and-pop shop where you get your coffee every morning? What would happen to them? If this bill passes, the city will not generate the revenue the administration anticipated it would. Businesses will shut down, jobs will be lost, and the kids and the advocates in this room will not see the program that they were promised. We will all lose. This great city should be known as an innovative city that supports small businesses and working class, not one to take a gamble on an administration that wants to be considered trailblazers. Thank you for your time, and I ask that you please vote this down.
Good afternoon. Thank you, President Clark. I am Daniel Grace, Secretary Treasurer, Teamsters Love Way 30. There is no other way to say this. The Kenny administration has snookered the city council and the city’s tax-weary citizens. The sugary drink tax just became a beverage tax, including all diet drinks as well. So much for the mayor’s pledge that those who didn’t want to pay the sugary drink tax could simply make the switch to diet beverages. The tax hurts the entire industry, one that employs thousands of Philadelphians. It hurts the companies my union represents, and it hurts the citizens like the men and women of my union who are here today. This tax ignores the impact on retailers, forces shoppers out of the city, hurts the overall business climate, and will be catastrophic for small business owners, restaurants, and consumers. And it’s decisive. We all agree on the value of education, but the way it was done was decisive for the city and the labor community, pitting one union against many others. As if that is not bad enough, council and the city taxpayers discovered at the last second that the administration earmarked at least $40 million annually in beverage tax revenues for the depleted fund balance, not to mention an additional $15 million annually in programs completely unrelated to children. I thought the tax was all about the kids. Isn’t that what we were all sold from onset? Now we know we were sold nothing but a bill of goods. It is clear, the $95 million the mayor claimed he needed annually to fund pre-K, community schools, and the rest was a sham. He wanted $95 million annually in a brazen cash grab from one industry and one industry only to pay for other initiatives that have nothing to do with children. Since the majority of council members are unaware of the many other essential programs the administration intends to fund with revenue from the tax, council should delay today’s final vote. The proposed legislation you intend to vote on today bears no resemblance to the administration’s original proposal. It is now clear that the amount the mayor claimed to need for pre-K upon which the revised beverage tax was calculated was wildly and misleadingly inflated. You are all hoodwinked by the administration. To protect council’s integrity and independence, the right thing to do is delay final passage to allow for further scrutiny and public debate. The citizens you represent deserve nothing less. One final note. No less of a legal authority than retired State Supreme Court Justice Ron Castillo has publicly declared the beverage tax illegal, stating that only the state legislature can determine where and on what items a tax can be imposed.
Thank you, ma’am. That’s before you cast your final vote. Thank you. Thank you very much.
The last two speakers approached the podium. And Debbie Mainstein.
Good morning, counsel. My name is Hillary Leonardopoulos, and I am testifying on behalf of the Philadelphia Federation of Teachers. Want to thank this entire body for consistently focusing on funding and services that directly impact the children of Philadelphia. Year in and year out, you have worked to find ways to respond to a funding crisis that affects our school communities in very real ways on a daily basis. At the PFT, there has never been a question in our minds that council would debate, vet, and ultimately coalesce around the best mechanism to ensure funding for pre-K, community schools, and rec centers. Council President Clark and each of you deserve enormous credit for your unwavering respect for and commitment to the children of Philadelphia. We will continue to work alongside of you to fight for the schools our children and educators deserve, and we thank you for everything you do for the citizens and children of Philadelphia
Good afternoon. Let me start by saying I know there has been a lot of rhetoric and a lot of communication and testimony regarding this issue. For those of you who are still present and attentive, I thank you for that. We thank you for that. Good afternoon, Council President Clark and council members. My name is Deborah Manchin, and I work at the Coca-Cola plant at Gee &amp; Erie in Philadelphia with over 700 of my fellow associates. Coca-Cola has been a part of the Philadelphia community for more than 114 years and provides good-paying jobs and great benefits. I’ve attended every hearing since March, and I would like to respectfully tell the members of this council how very disappointed I was last week when we all found out that the sugar-sweetened beverage tax was not all about parks and rec, but it was in fact also about the fund balance. That is not the transparent government we voted for, and I was shocked to see the bait and switch that occurred here in this very room. Everyone here supports pre-K education. However, many Philadelphians disagree with singling out the beverage industry as a means to pay for it. A beverage tax is regressive, and it’s bad public policy. Today, most companies have to tighten their belts to survive. Our local building operation is no different. Many businesses have already implemented zero-based budgeting in one form or another, so they are prepared to address ever-changing economic conditions. In fact, Mayor Kenny recognized the value of zero-based budgeting during his campaign. We encourage the city to utilize this approach going forward so they can plan for today and the future and invest in the city versus continuing to tax hard-working Philadelphians. Lastly, I want to dispel a few myths that we have heard. It sounds like a small tax at one and a half cents per ounce, but in reality, it is equivalent to a 50% tax on the cost to consumers. This tax will be passed onto retailers. As you have heard from many small businesses, they will pass the tax onto consumers. A business cannot survive without passing on the cost of this unprecedented regressive tax. The beverage tax covers more than soda, including juice drinks, sports drinks, teas, flavored waters, and energy drinks, and now diets have been included as well. Most Philadelphians will avoid beverage purchases in this city and will take their business to surrounding suburbs, that is, if they have the means to. In essence, the tax will be unfairly shouldered by the poorest of the poor. There is still time. We implore you, please, vote no on this sugary drink tax. Thank you.
My name is Madeline Dunn, and I came down here prepared to vote no, but I changed my mind for one reason. If, if, we get an audit going and the audit is to see that the money goes to the children only, you got a yes vote. And I mean it. It has to go. In Philadelphia, it seems as though we are all over the place on everything when... Let me just run this by you since I’m not going to keep going on with the tax. I made a decision on that. My house was worth $35,000 in year 10. In year 11, it went up to 50. Nothing been built in my neighborhood, nothing, okay? Guess what it was worth last year? $187,000. I’ll be 83 in October. Where am I going to get money to pay that kind of taxes from? So, my kids don’t get nothing for Christmas, grandchildren, graduation, nobody got anything. If I decide to walk down to Dunkin’ Donuts and get a coffee, I have to really punish myself because I cannot afford it. My taxes are outrageous. So, I understand the tax situation. So, I understand the tax situation, but our children are in need, and I would like to see... Can I get a half a minute more? 30 seconds? I would like to see an audit on the Park Authority. Where the money comes from, because I think my community pays more than anybody else, I'd like to see an audit on the school district, where the money is used, the textbooks, I mean, everything that they do for our children. I went to Martha Washington back in 1938, and they had papers and books, and people weren't making much money. And I can remember Mr. Dunn and I working like dogs, saving money. We have properties. And what is worth now? What's the properties worth now? They all of a sudden went, "Ch-ch-ch-ch-ch." I can't afford to pay the taxes, but I'm paying them. You know why? Because I'm getting another job. I'm available. I'm available. I'm getting another job. I'm only going to be 83 in October. My brain still works. I can move around some. I do have to...
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Okay. Ms. Dunn? All right. Before our last speaker, just for the record, we're going to invoke Rule 16, subsection 2, on public comment with respect to repetitious testimony. We have heard... Ma'am, hold on a second, please. So, we have heard an unimaginable amount of testimony about the sugar tax, the beverage tax, whatever. So, this is going to be our last speaker, and then we're going to move ahead, and we're going to conduct our business, and there will ultimately be a vote on all the measures before us today. Ma'am, if you... Please proceed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing me because you were going to have a...
Say your name for the record, ma'am.
My name is Ruth Basemore. I've been a community person for a long time, and I really want to speak on the fact that this bill has been put through without representation or due process. First of all, as a senior in Philadelphia, we find that we are being pushed out due to all these crazy things that the city is making us responsible for. The bill for our children, we need to be very clear. It's not about the children. It's about how Philadelphia runs its business. We're losing our homes through eminent domain. The colleges are taking over. Nobody is paying taxes but a few people, and therefore, all of the things that they say our children should already be paid by our taxes. So, we need to be very clear. We need an investigation of why we're losing everything in City Philadelphia, and the city is building condos, and nobody is paying taxes, a tax abatement, and we're losing our city through all nonprofits, and nobody is paying taxes. But the people who are paying taxes are paying water bills, sewer bills, and so I want us, the city, to be accountable. Thank you.
Okay. All right. That concludes our public comment session for the day and for this budget season. So, I will now ask Mr. Deckers to read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution or the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, and without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, would you please now read the titles of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda?
Resolution number 160481 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 7th Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And resolution number 160619 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the 44th and Aspen Urban Manulare area identified by house number and street address as 756 Brooklyn Street. And resolution number 160620 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the University City Unit 3 Urban Manulare area identified by house number and street address as 3500 Lancaster Avenue. And resolution number 160621 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the 44th and Aspen Urban Manulare area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 753 Brooklyn Street and 4206 through 08 Lancaster Avenue. And resolution number 160622 entitled a resolution initiating action to establish a Neighborhood Improvement District consisting of a parcel located at the northeast corner of 15th Street and Chestnut Street, commonly known as 1441 Chestnut Street, to be known as the Headquarter Hotel Neighborhood Improvement District. And resolution number 160624 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the Cecil B. Moore Avenue Urban Manulare area identified by house numbers and street address as 1800 Cecil B. Moore Avenue and 1804 Cecil B. Moore Avenue. And resolution number 160625 entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 47th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And resolution number 160627 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Land Bank deeds conveying title to certain properties located in the 6th Councilmanic District pursuant to the requirements of the Commonwealth Land Bank Act. And resolution number 160630 entitled a resolution also naming the 3,000 block of North Ringgold Street as John Brickhouse Way, memorializing the loyal and dedicated service of John Brickhouse to the 38th Ward. And resolution number 160631 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Philadelphia Redevelopment Area identified by house number and street address as 4635 through 37 West Girard Avenue. And resolution number 160632 entitled a resolution approving the redevelopment contract of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Parkside Urban Manulare area identified by house numbers and street addresses as 1701 through 1717, 1702, 1706 through 1710, 1712 through 1716, 1719 through 1729, North 52nd Street, 1718 North Creighton Street, 1722 through 24 North Creighton Street, 5216, 5218 through 20, 5222 through 34, and 5238 Parkside Avenue. And resolution number 160633 entitled a resolution approving the grant of an easement for the redevelopment and urban renewal of a portion of the West Parkside Urban Manulare area identified by house number and street address as 1718 through 26 North 52nd Street. And resolution number 160638 entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And resolution number 160639 entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 36th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And resolution number 160641 entitled a resolution calling upon the City of Philadelphia to exhaust all reasonably necessary steps to ensure that PMC Property Group reaffirms and satisfies its contractual and moral obligation to set aside onsite units of affordable housing at One Water Street, the expected performance of which conditioned the city's decision to grant PMC a substantial density bonus permitting construction of additional floors and units therein. And resolution number 160653 entitled a resolution nominating 25 individuals for consideration by the mayor as appointees to the Commission on Parks and Recreation. And resolution number 160654 entitled a resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration deeds conveying conditional fees simple title to certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements there on situated in the 13th Ward of the City of Philadelphia. And resolution number 160658 entitled a resolution urging the United States House of Representatives to pass House Resolution 210 entitled affirming and recognizing the Cammer, Loishen, Hemang, and Montognard freedom fighters and the people of Cambodia and Laos for their support and defense of the United States Armed Forces and freedom in Southeast Asia. And resolution number 160583 entitled a resolution appointing Daniel Connor to the Board of Directors of the Germantown Special Services District. And resolution number 160584 entitled a resolution appointing Tripida Mason to the Board of Directors of the Germantown Special Services District. And resolution number 160586 entitled a resolution appointing Patrick W. Jones to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District. And resolution number 160587 entitled a resolution appointing Byron Davis to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District. And resolution number 160588 entitled a resolution appointing Julie Baranuskas to the Board of Directors for the Germantown Special Services District.
Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move through the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, ayes. And each of the resolutions on the consent agenda have been adopted. We will now consider today's bill consent agenda. I will ask the clerk to read the titles of all the bills on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the bill... Excuse me. On the consent agenda, upon such an objection and without debate, the bill will immediately be removed from the consent agenda and placed on our regular and final passes calendar. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the bills on the consent agenda.
Bill number 160302A entitled an ordinance amending section 14518 of the Philadelphia Code entitled WWA West Washington Avenue Overlay District by adding additional standards and making related changes. And bill number 160132A entitled an ordinance amending title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter, 194100, entitled New Sustainable Businesses, to reduce the tax burden on new sustainable businesses. And bill number 160133 entitled an ordinance amending chapter 192600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Business Income and Receipts Taxes, to revise the Sustainable Business Tax Credit by changing the criteria for eligibility, by increasing the number of eligible businesses, by increasing the total tax credit amount, and by expanding the credit. And bill number 160223 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ford Road, Chaminu Drive, Belmont Avenue, and Monument Road. And bill number 160272 entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by amending section 14905 entitled non-accessory signs by adding a new subsection to permit one advertising sign with certain conditions within the area bounded by McGee Avenue Extended, the Delaware River, Unruh Avenue, and New State Road. And bill number 160275 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by State Road, the Delaware Expressway I-95, and Ashburner Street. And bill number 160276 entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by amending section 14905 entitled non-accessory signs by adding a new subsection to permit one advertising sign with certain conditions within the area bounded by State Road, the Delaware Expressway I-95, and Ashburner Street. And bill number 160299 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Ridge Avenue, Hermit Street, Henry Avenue, and Lincoln Drive. And bill number 160300 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Carpenter Street, Broad Street, Washington Avenue, and 15th Street. And bill number 160327 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, Holm Avenue, Fairfield Street, Sully Avenue, Farnsworth Street, Fuller Street, Revere Street, Ron Street, Farnsworth Street, Lonnie Street, Lister Street, Carnwath Street, Revere Street, Ryan Avenue, and Roosevelt Boulevard. And bill number 160328 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Roosevelt Boulevard, North Ferry Road, Kelly Drive, Lincoln Drive, Gypsy Lane, Schoolhouse Lane, Crescent Street, Indian Queen Lane, and Conrad Street. And bill number 160335 entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled by revising chapter 14500 entitled Overlay Zoning Districts with respect to the North Delaware Avenue Neighborhood Commercial Area Overlay District. And bill number 160336 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Lehigh Avenue, Trenton Avenue, Norris Street, Front Street, Coral Street, Boston Street, Emerald Street, Haggard Street, and Kensington Avenue. And bill number 160369 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Elkin Street, Holney Avenue, 20th Street, Bellfield Avenue, and Worcester Street. And bill number 160515 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Parkside Avenue, Belmont Avenue, Girard Avenue, Marion Avenue, and 52nd Street. And bill number 160518 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Grace Ferry Avenue, Kimball Street, 25th Street, and Washington Avenue. And bill number 160521 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Front Street, Coral Street, Boston Street, Emerald Street, Haggard Street, and Kensington Avenue. And bill number 160522 entitled an ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Eastwing Hocking Street, Adams Avenue, Bristol Street Extended, and the Frankfurt Creek. And bill number 160526 entitled an ordinance amending title 14 of the Philadelphia Code including by amending chapter 14500 entitled Overlay Zoning Districts by modifying the boundaries of the old city residential district area of the Center City Overlay District and by revising parking and loading requirements for the East Callahell Overlay District. And bill number 160402 entitled an ordinance approving the fiscal year 2017 capital budget providing for expenditures for the capital purposes of the Philadelphia Gas Works. And bill number 160470 entitled an ordinance amending the ordinance approved July 12, 1968, relating to pension benefits for employees working on behalf of the Philadelphia Gas Works by revising the Philadelphia Gas Works Pension Plan to incorporate amendments thereto with respect to death benefits for certain plan participants. And bill number 160510 entitled an ordinance authorizing the City Treasurer on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment agreement with Wells Fargo Bank for provision of favorable banking services to the city. And bill number 160523 entitled an ordinance providing for an exemption from charges relating to stormwater management and disposal for community gardens operated for community benefit. And bill number 160332 entitled an ordinance authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2016 from the Grants for Revenue Fund, the Director of Finance Provision for other grants, to the General Fund, the Department of Streets, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Property, the Director of Finance, the Procurement Department, the Law Department, and the District Attorney. And bill number 160334 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development all a part of a parcel of land located in the area bounded by Buttonwood Street, North 10th Street, Hamilton Street, Ridge Avenue, and North 11th Street. And bill number 160366 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to lease to the Rosemary Montagnolo Senior Center the premises located at 12601 Townsend Road. And bill number 160399 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to acquire a bridge that crosses the Schuylkill River below the Grace Ferry Bridge and to acquire rights or property interests in connection with supports for the bridge and its abutments. And bill number 160406 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to enter into an amendment to a sublease agreement with the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development for use by the City of premises located at 1101 Market Street. And bill number 160463 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to enter into an agreement to lease and purchase from Tinicum Township an approximately 21-acre parcel of land adjacent to Philadelphia International Airport. And bill number 160464 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire approximately 8.5 acres of Hog Island Road from Tinicum Township. And bill number 160553 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to convey to the Philadelphia Authority for Industrial Development a parcel of land commonly known as 3033 West Glenwood Avenue. And bill number 160554 entitled an ordinance approving a lease agreement between Philadelphia Gas Works and Delval Realty Group, 4.5-acre parcel and a certain 3.14-acre parcel located near Delaware Avenue and Tioga Street. And bill number 160560 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire approximately 1 acre of land known as Parcel 8A located in Tinicum Township at Tinicum Island Road rear and bounded by Philadelphia International Airport to the south, east, and west sides. And bill number 160561 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire an approximately 2-acre property known as 8365 Enterprise Avenue. And bill number 160562 entitled an ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire approximately 1 acre of land known as Parcel 8A located And Bill Number 160562 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire approximately 1.2 acres of land known as Parcel T located at the northeast corner of Island and Escort Avenues. And Bill Number 160563 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Director of Commerce to acquire land as, known as the Orange Line in Tinnicum Township and Philadelphia, in the vicinity of Philadelphia International Airport. And Bill Number 160224 entitled in ordinance authorizing the installation of all way stop signs at the intersection of Boone Street and DuPont Street. And Bill Number 160274 entitled in ordinance amending section 12701 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Bicycle Lanes by authorizing the Department of Streets to designate buffered bicycle lanes in each direction on Tyson Avenue from Roosevelt Boulevard to Frankfurt Avenue and to remove a travel lane in each direction of that portion of Tyson Avenue. And Bill Number 160363 entitled in ordinance amending section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 090120, approved April 15, 2009, entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 107 and 130 by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of 47th Street from Fairmount Avenue to Brown Street by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 160368 entitled in ordinance legalizing an existing external steel stairs to the second floor of 2654 South Quebec Street. And Bill Number 160397 entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 120 by striking from the city plan and vacating Lambert Street and Woodstock Street each from Jefferson Street to Redner Street. And Bill Number 160403 entitled in ordinance establishing parking regulations in the vicinity of 13th Street and Wharton Street, and Clymer Street and 12th Street, 13th Street and Bainbridge Street, and 13th Street and Fitzwater Street. And Bill Number 160404 entitled in ordinance amending section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of Allegheny Avenue between Kensington Avenue and Bath Street. And Bill Number 160405 entitled in ordinance amending section 9205 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Sidewalk Sales by prohibiting vending on both sides of Castor Avenue between Glenwood Avenue and Aramingo Avenue, on both sides of Amber Street between Tioga Street and Castor Avenue, on both sides of Butler Street between Frankfurt Avenue and Aramingo Avenue, and on both sides of Frankfurt Avenue between Vanango Street and Butler Street. And Bill Number 160459 entitled in ordinance authorizing Moherran Partners to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1355 Front Street. And Bill Number 160461 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority to construct, own, and maintain digital outdoor advertising signs encroaching on the public right-of-way at various subway, elevated train, and rail entrances in the city. And Bill Number 160513 entitled in ordinance amending section 9212 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Newsstands by revising the requirements for sales from newsstands by permitting newsstands to sell additional products and services. And Bill Number 160520 entitled in ordinance authorizing Philadelphia License Number 1 to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 1200 South 21st Street. And Bill Number 160527 entitled in ordinance authorizing Kubiel Ben Nayed to install, own, and maintain an open-air sidewalk cafe at 906 Christian Street. And Bill Number 160528 entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 27S by striking from the city plan and vacating Shunk Street from Swanson Street to Van Dalia Street. And Bill Number 160555 entitled in ordinance authorizing the opening of Delaware Avenue from Orthodox Street to Buckeye Street and the opening of the unopened and widened portions of Buckeye Street from Richmond Street to the southeasterly right-of-way line of the Philadelphia Belt Line Railroad. And Bill Number 160556 entitled in ordinance authorizing the paving of Delaware Avenue from Orthodox Street to Buckeye Street and Buckeye Street from Delaware Avenue to Bath Street. And Bill Number 160558 entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan numbers 305 and 306 by placing on the city plan Delaware Avenue from Orthodox Street to Buckeye Street. And Bill Number 160559 entitled in ordinance authorizing East Falls Development Corporation to construct, own, and maintain various right-of-way encroachments at 4168 Ridge Avenue. And Bill Number 160564 entitled in ordinance establishing a no tractor-trailer parking regulation on both sides of North 5th Street from Spencer Street to Godfrey Avenue. And Bill Number 160565 entitled in ordinance amending section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 140280, approved May 19, 2014, entitled in ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades on a portion of city plan number 271 by striking from the city plan and vacating Hope Street from Laurel Street to Pollard Street by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And Bill Number 160566 entitled in ordinance amending section 9 of an ordinance, Bill Number 150377, approved June 18, 2015, entitled in ordinance authorizing the construction, ownership, and maintenance of various encroachments into the right-of-way of Market Street, Philbrook Street, 11th Street, 10th Street, 9th Street, and 8th Street by further authorizing the Streets Department to approve encroachments consistent with plans approved by the Philadelphia City Planning Commission and the City of Philadelphia Art Commission. And Bill Number 160115 entitled in ordinance amending Title 9 of the Philadelphia Code by creating a new chapter to hold business owners responsible for nuisance behavior occurring on the business premises and within the immediate vicinity of the business. And Bill Number 160249 entitled in ordinance amending section 93908 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Notification of License Obligation by adding a requirement for the city to provide an explanation of the license requirements for vacant properties. And Bill Number 160303 entitled in ordinance amending section 9703 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Special Assembly Occupancies by further providing for types of activity to be regulated and by altering the fees and requirements for a special assembly occupancy license. And Bill Number 160462 entitled in ordinance amending the Philadelphia Administrative Code, the Philadelphia Fire Code, and the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code of the Philadelphia Code by adding certain provisions relating to maintenance and inspection of fire escapes. And Bill Number 160468 entitled in ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code of Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of the Philadelphia Code by revising signage requirements relating to construction and demolition projects. And Bill Number 160469 entitled in ordinance amending Title 4 of the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code, Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code of the Philadelphia Code by revising requirements relating to construction and demolition projects including the expiration of permits. And Bill Number 160472 entitled in ordinance amending Subcode PM of the Philadelphia Code by adding certain provisions relating to drinking facilities in schools. And Bill Number 160278 entitled in ordinance amending section 171305 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Compensation Required to Be Paid to Employees to revise the compensation and benefits required to be provided in connection with application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard. And Bill Number 160301 entitled in ordinance naming and designating in addition to the Marion Anderson Recreation Center located at the corner of 17th and Fitzwater Streets, the Ryan Howard Training Center. And Bill Number 160304 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 15600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Parks and Playground by adding a new section requiring that all parks and playgrounds owned or controlled by the city to be more inclusive, intergenerational, and family-friendly, and provide equipment and play or fitness opportunities to accommodate children and adults with special needs. And Bill Number 160458 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to accept Title 2 all or a portion of the parcels of land in the area bounded by North Street, North 18th Street, Wallace Street, and North 19th Street, and amending Chapter 15200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fairmount Park System to include such properties among the areas designated as part of the Fairmount Park System. And Bill Number 160473 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Parks and Recreation Commissioner to enter into an amendment to release and indemnify the Southeastern Pennsylvania Transportation Authority in connection with access provided by SEPTA to carry out a project for improvements to JFK Plaza, also known as Love Park, at 15th and JFK Boulevard. And Bill Number 160529 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to accept Title 2 all or a portion of the parcels of land commonly known as 1035 through 37 South 16th Street and 1028 through 32 South Fairhill Street, and amending Chapter 15200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Fairmount Park System to include such properties among the areas designated as part of the Fairmount Park System. And Bill Number 160557 entitled in ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property and the Parks and Recreation Commissioner to sublease from the Philadelphia Municipal Authority certain land and improvements known as McCardle Playground owned by the School District of Philadelphia. And Bill Number 160325 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 171600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans by modifying the monetary threshold triggering the requirement of an economic opportunity plan on city-funded projects or contracts. And Bill Number 160129 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 171600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans by amending certain definitions and amending Chapter 172000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled First Source Jobs Policy by designating the Economic Opportunity Review Committee to oversee implementation and enforcement of the city's first source jobs policy. And Bill Number 160364 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 171300 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefit Standard to revise the benefits required to be provided in connection with application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard. And Bill Number 160370 entitled in ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Contracts and Procurement by adding provisions requiring the city contractors to pay subcontractors promptly and setting forth an alternative process for prompt payment. And Bill Number 160333 entitled in ordinance amending Chapter 10800 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Safety by amending section 10820 entitled Cutting Weapons in Public Places by excluding certain emergency personnel from the prohibition on the use and possession of cutting tools.
All right. Almost forgot. Let's give Mr. Decker a hand.[1236.01][1236.01](APPLAUSE). Very impressive. Okay. These bills having been read on two different days, the question for each bill now, the Sheldon Bill passed finally, the clerk shall call the roll, and upon being called, each council member shall vote aye on each of the bills, nay on each of the bills, or indicate those bills for which the member is voting aye, or those bills for which the member is voting nay. Mr. Decker, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass.
Aye.
Councilwoman Blackwell.
Aye.
Councilman Dom.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Where I am recusing myself from voting on this bill because my law firm represents a party in this legislation. Thank you. The record shall reflect that, Councilman.
Councilman Greenlee.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gim.
Aye.
Councilman Heenan.
Aye.
Councilman Johnson.
Aye.
Councilman Jones.
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil.
Aye.
Councilman O.
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker.
Aye.
Councilwoman Geronae Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Squilla.
Aye.
Councilman Taubinberger.
Aye.
Council President Clark.
Aye on all bills. Majority of all the members having voted in affirmative for each of the bills, the bills on the consent agenda are passed. Again, let the record reflect that, Councilman Green recused himself on one of those bills. Okay. We now consider the bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passes calendar. And, Mr. Decker, I would ask you to read the title.
Resolution 160644. A resolution condemning the racist, sexist, xenophobic, and anti-American values that have been espoused by Donald Trump during his bid for the United States presidency, which are at odds with the deeply held values of the City of Philadelphia, the City of brotherly love, and sisterly affection.
Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Yes, Mr. President. I'm not going to speak as long as I would have last week on this, not the content of it, as much as the content of it being a resolution of council. This is personal privilege at the end. If you've got a problem with what somebody says, does, got convicted of, went to jail for, whatever it is, the councils should not be weighing in on a presidential candidate's comments. I just disagree with that, and I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Record shall reflect that, Councilman. Chair. Councilwoman, oh, okay. Let Councilman O go first, okay. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I did speak to my respected colleague, Councilwoman Helen Gim, and for the reasons stated by the minority leader, regardless of the content, I will be voting no on this for the stated reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Thank you very much. I've also spoken to my respected colleague Helen Gim, and also in agreement with Councilman O and Councilman Brian O'Neil, I will be voting no as well, and wish to be recorded as such.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. To colleagues, I'm proud to live in a city that passed a landmark, landmark fair practices ordinance establishing wide-ranging legal protections against discrimination based
comments. I just disagree with that, and I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Record shall reflect that, Councilman. Chair, Councilwoman, oh, okay. Let Councilman O go first, okay. Chair recognizes, Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I did speak to my respected colleague, Councilwoman Helen Gim, and for the reasons stated by the minority leader, regardless of the content, I will be voting no on this for the stated reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Taubinberger.
Thank you very much. I've also spoken to my respected colleague Helen Gim, and also in agreement with Councilman O and Councilman Brian O'Neil, I will be voting no as well, and wish to be recorded as such.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. To colleagues, I'm proud to live in a city that passed a landmark fair practices ordinance establishing wide-ranging legal protections against discrimination based on age, ancestry, breastfeeding, color, disability, domestic and sexual violence, ethnicity, gender identity, familial status, marital status, national orientation, pregnancy, childbirth, or related medical condition, race, religion, sex, and sexual orientation, all of which Mr. Trump has violated in numerous cases with his hate speech. The purpose of this resolution is to send a clear message. We have a right to First Amendment rights to speech. We do not have a right to be avoided from criticism of such. And with that, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
Exactly. Thank you to the move. It's been moved in properly, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Eyes have it. Resolution 160644 is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160659.
A resolution requesting the city controller to conduct an audit of the Philadelphia Parking Authority's policies and procedures on the administration of its-
Folks, can I ask you, keep it quiet, please? Thank you.
A resolution requesting the city controller to conduct an audit of the Philadelphia Parking Authority's policies and procedures on the administration of its operations in the city of Philadelphia.
Chair recognizes, Councilman Greenlee. Miss President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Bill Number, I'm sorry, Resolution Number 160659 be tabled.
Second.
Second, it's been moved in properly, second, in that bill, I'm sorry, Resolution 160659 be tabled. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
To be heard on it, Council President?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor. I can recognize you immediately after, sir. The rules say that without debate, so when there's a table, when a motion is table, but I will recognize you immediately after the vote.
Sure. Could I ask for a roll call vote?
You motion.
Motion on the floor.
I'm sorry.
There's a motion on the floor.
The motion is on the floor, so there's no debate on the motion.
Correct.
So, moved in properly, second. All in favor of tabling Resolution 160659?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Eyes have it. Resolution 160659 is tabled. I will now recognize, Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. This resolution is quite benign. It simply is a resolution requesting the city controller to conduct a performance audit of the Philadelphia Parking Authority, which has not been audited since 2009. Philadelphians read in the paper about the millions of dollars that are collected in our city and then fund projects all over our state. A lot of what we've done today, which is difficult, is the issue of whether pre-K shall be funded by a beverage tax, or whether there's money in the budget. I believe there's money in the budget to fund this, but what I don't think we can dispute is that from the streets of Philadelphia, the parking fees that are collected into hundreds of millions of dollars are not being distributed to the city of Philadelphia or the school district of Philadelphia, and that we should audit the parking authority. The parking authority collected between 2010 and 2015 $1.37 billion. Gave the city only $394 million. The question is, what happened to the remaining $980 million? In October 2013, the Philadelphia Parking Authority came before council to request an increase in fees and fines, stating that this would provide an additional $2 million per year for the Philadelphia public schools. Council approved that request, and the very next year, funding to the school district was cut by $3.5 million. The next year, the Philadelphia Parking Authority came before city council to request a 50-cent per hour increase for parking meters in areas outside of center cities such as Roxborough, Mayfair, Chestnut Hill, many areas that are challenged by high parking fees. The request was granted because, in particular, the testimony of the executive director was that this would generate $7.5 million for the public schools. Council approved this increase, and the school district then made a projection that that year, the following year, it would receive $19.5 million from the Philadelphia Parking Authority. In fact, it received less than $11.1 million. And then, in 2015, even though the revenues did increase by $5.7 million from 2014, the Parking Authority increased its operating and administrative expenses by $6.4 million. There's a question, $1 million in bonuses, only a audit by the Controller's office would be able to find out whether this is true or not. On March 23rd, the Philadelphia School District learned from an article in The Notebook that the Philadelphia Parking Authority would reduce payments to the school district in fiscal year 2017 by $3 million, and therefore, it's only budgeted $8 million. The Philadelphia School District was not at the table when the city met with the Philadelphia Parking Authority to review its financial reports. It only was invited to table when this council body, through its joint committee, held hearings a couple weeks ago. For both the city and the school district, Philadelphia Parking Authority provides limited funds in comparison to what it collects, and it only gives the city and the schools what is left over after expenses and funding projects all over our state. It's important to know if the Philadelphia Parking Authority is running efficiently, if it's running effectively, and the last, because, well, we're here on a beverage tax, because we don't have a funding source that people are comfortable with. If they don't accept that there's money in the budget, they want more money. The Parking Authority was taken over by the state in 2001, the same year our school district was taken over by the state. And so, the report of the controller looked at seven categories. Center city garages, and its summary states, increases in administrative expenses significantly outpaces increases in operating revenues over the six-year period. Airport parking operations, and it states, inconsistent approval protocol exists for the issuance of free parking passes to PPA personnel and the Division of Aviation. Salary costs, no consistency in preparing staff plans to demonstrate the need for all personnel currently employed. On-street parking operations, no documented policies and procedures for the determination of payment amounts due to the city and school district of Philadelphia. Profitability, the revenue bond activity significantly diminishes PPA's profitability. Interest on debt was 43.4% of a total expenses on average. The average, the industry average, is only 28%. New responsibilities, management did not prepare revenue and expense projections beyond one year. And finally, contracted services, management could not produce a comprehensive list of contracts, and it also stated that they do not have open bidding, which affects many of our minority and female-owned businesses in the city. I would like to say that if you look at the first page, Page 1, of the handout that I provided, we received two different sets of data from the Parking Authority. Total expenses from the financial statement and total expenses provided to city council members, and you can see that over the five-year period, there is a difference of $24 million. So, we do not know what that was for. Council President, I think that we have raised sales tax, real estate tax, use and occupancy tax, cigarettes, and now we look at soda, real estate transfer tax, all upon the people of Philadelphia, when in fact, the people's resources, the streets, the parking lots, are producing hundreds of millions of dollars that should be benefiting the people of this city and our schools. And I think it's incumbent that we continue to look at that source of revenues rather than burdening the people with more and more taxes. Thank you very much.
Hold on. Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Gim.
I will be very brief, Council President. Thank you very much, and thank you to my colleague, Councilman O, who laid out very clearly the concerns that specifically address in my interest the funding for the school district of Philadelphia. The Philadelphia Parking Authority in 2014, as the councilman laid out, came and testified before this council that it would promise to increase $7.5 million to the school district in funds if we then increased on-street parking meter rates and kiosk fees. Between, by that measure, they should be delivering between $18 to $20 million a year to the public schools. Next year, they are projected to deliver eight. The difference between $10 to $12 million is a cohort of full councilors throughout our district. It's about books and supplies in our schools. It's about children struggling to even get water access. We are going to hit a fiscal cliff in FY19 with the school district of Philadelphia, and to me, it is important that we have exhausted all other options before we go back to our residents any further for additional taxes that we may have to come before them for. And at the end of the day, this resolution was fundamentally about an audit. I really look forward to working and hope I can work very closely with my colleagues on city council during this summer to talk about what that can look like in a better way, and that as we revisit this in the fall, that we'll have come to a better place about what we want to do, because I think it's important that we are all in agreement about what we're looking for. But again, at the end of the day, this is about an audit, and if an agency is actively seeking not to have an audit, I think that is darn well a reason why they should be audited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Decker, please call, read the title, 1605, oh, no, you know what? Move on.
An ordinance amending Chapter 10, 600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Public Places' Prohibited Conduct" by adding a new section, 10, 615, entitled "Disorderly Conduct and Related Defenses," to prohibit certain types of disorderly public conduct and to provide for penalties.
This bill was heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunrana Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Ayes are 17 and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160138A.
An ordinance amending various provisions of the Philadelphia Code, including in Title 4, the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, Title 9, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and Title 14, Zoning and Planning, to preclude issuance of certain licenses and permits to any applicant who is delinquent in payments owed to the city.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is- Hold on. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to be heard on, before the bill is read, before the vote is taken. Okay?
I'm sorry, Councilman.
No, I'd like to be heard on the bill.
Oh, absolutely. Please.
And I just wanted to say, while I certainly applaud my colleague, Councilman Dom, and the spirit in which this bill was developed, I have deep concerns about the impact it will have on our citizens, particularly those who are low income, those who are minority, those who may be less savvy in dealing with the city of Philadelphia. And I did notice that during our public comment section, there was a speaker who came forward from Rittenhouse Square, who would not likely fall into any of those categories. The bill's intentions, I support 1,000%. No license or permit should be issued if someone is delinquent in payment of any taxes, charges, et cetera, through the city of Philadelphia. But the problem that we have is that there seems to be numerous problematic issues with the Department of Revenue, a lack of structure under how agreements are made, under what circumstances for payment arrangements, and et cetera. They seem to be very arbitrary in terms of what is allowable and what is not, and I speak from experience as a member of council, as a district council person, and dealing directly with my constituents who have worked with the city's revenue department. We attempted in our last finance, or one of our last finance committee hearings to address the issue. I want to thank the Commissioner, Commissioner Breslin, for his cooperation, but it's clear that we really do have a long way to go. And one of the things that we did suggest was the implementation of a tax revenue collection task force that would include folks from the city of Philadelphia and outside from private institutions, that they could actually weigh in on the way the city collects revenue. We clearly have a situation and a problem here in what we do and how we do it. I just wanted to give a couple of examples as to why I'm not able to support this bill today. And one is that I have a constituent who actually came to my front door last summer, and he should have, because he paid his real estate tax bill, which had been delinquent, through the city of Philadelphia. He went to the wrong window to stop a sheriff sale that was pending. He owed a balance, let's say, of $10,000. He paid what was requested, which was maybe $5,000, and his property was sold anyway. When we contacted Revenue to find out why it was sold and the circumstances, we were told that he went to the wrong payment window. No one should ever have to go to the right window, or do this, or do that. If they have the resources to make the payment to the city of Philadelphia, and we accept that payment, then there should be a system in place so that they do not have to have go back and then retract the sale, get their property back from the city of Philadelphia, and these sorts of things are completely outrageous and unacceptable, and I think that we would all agree to that. We have many other examples that I could go into, including some that I just referred to Commissioner Breslin, but I just wanted to ask Councilman Dom to consider holding this bill, as I've asked the Revenue Commissioner and Mayor Kenny's administration to work to develop a revenue collection task force with input, again, from public and private sectors to fix what is wrong. And we certainly hope that that will be considered, because we can't ask our citizens to get themselves straight if the city of Philadelphia isn't straight itself. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I understand the concerns. I just wanted to mention that the BIA, Building Industry Association, with the amendment that we put in place, supports this bill, number one. I have a few comments just to, I'll just read maybe one or two paragraphs of my comments here. Just says, "This bill will require that no building permit or license be issued or renewed if an applicant is delinquent in the payment of any city of school district dollars unless an applicant has entered into a payment agreement. As a government, we must continue to take the necessary steps to tackle the outstanding issues involving delinquencies, and while we've made slight improvements in our collection rates, we still have more work to do, and I want to make sure we equip our government with the means necessary to catch those who aren't paying while the rest of us do pay. We owe it to the taxpayers of this city who play by the rules to clean up our books. We have over $700 million of delinquent taxes right now on the city's books right now. We owe it to the children of this city who have the right to a quality education supported by sufficient resources, and we owe it to ourselves, the city government, because if we prove we can be a fiscally responsible enterprise, more companies will want to do business with us. Collecting delinquent taxes is one of my priorities as a new member of this distinguished body, and this bill is a step in the right direction." I want to thank the Building Industry Association of Philadelphia and the Kenny administration for working with me and my office on this legislation. We'll continue to work together to address inefficiencies and improve our efforts to address this very important issue. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Taubinberger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know the city has problems collecting and also keeping records sometimes, but I truly believe that the amendments that were put forth are more than adequate, and I will be voting aye on this bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Bass.
President, I just wanted to mention that, I just want to be clear, that collecting delinquent taxes is my priority as well, but I just want to be certain that we're not shutting people out, particularly minority contractors who have been shut out of opportunities in the city of Philadelphia on numerous fronts, and that this is another way to shut them out, because they are unable to work with the city's revenue department to get an acceptable plan in place to be able to make payments. We want folks to be able to pay their taxes. We certainly want to collect that revenue, but there has to be a system in place to be able to do it. We should have already had it in place, and now is the time to do it. We cannot wait any longer. I certainly do understand Councilman Dom wanting to move forward with this bill, but I do think that there is more work to be done before we shut out folks who may be less savvy in terms of dealing with the city of Philadelphia.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had told Councilman Dom that I would support his bill, but given the fact that Councilwoman Bass is not saying we shouldn't do it, but only asking for a delay so that we may make sure that we're being fair to all people, that sounds fair to me. And so, I, Councilman Dom, I apologize, but I will be supporting Councilwoman Bass in her views. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. In this body, we've always talked about getting what is due the city. We have fought for it when we talked about it years ago, when we talked about out-of-town realtors that came into Philadelphia, pay their home taxes and don't pay Philadelphia taxes. But I have to stand with Councilwoman Bass today. We passed a law that protected senior citizens because they couldn't tell when they went to the revenue department whether they were paying the principal, the interest, the penalty, and they told us that they would fix it so that they understood when they applied a dollar where that went. Two years later, after passing that law, we don't have that law enforced. So until they fix that, I can't be in support of this. So I stand with Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Mr. Decker, read the title one more time.
Bill Number 160138, an ordinance amending various provisions of the Philadelphia Code, including in Title 4, the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, Title 9, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and Title 14, Zoning and Planning, to preclude issuance of certain licenses and permits to any applicant who is delinquent in payments owed to the city.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil. Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunrana Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Eyes are 14 and ayes are three. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Think the one that most people have been waiting for. Some people go and get some lunch. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160176.
An ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Finance Taxes and Collections" by adding a new chapter, 194100, entitled "Sugar-Sweetened Beverage Tax."
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilman Dom. Councilman Green. Councilman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilman Heenan. Councilman Johnson. Councilman Jones. Councilman O'Neil.
Oh, folks, I can't. I gotta hear.
Councilman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunrana Sanchez. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are thirteen and nays are four. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Okay? All right. Okay. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 160173.
An Ordinance Cementing Section 191806 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax, to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the school district of Philadelphia.
Thank you. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160174.
An Ordinance Cementing Section 191801 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Authorization of Tax, to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the city of Philadelphia.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160175.
An Ordinance Cementing Chapter 191500 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax, by revising certain tax rates.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160170.
An Ordinance to Adopt a Capital Program for the Six Fiscal Years 2017 through 2022 Inclusive.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160171.
An Ordinance to Adopt a Fiscal 2017 Capital Budget.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160172.
An Ordinance Adopting the Operating Budget for Fiscal Year 2017.
Mr. Decker, call the roll. It's getting late. This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. I believe we have one more. Mr. Decker, 160471.
An Ordinance Cementing Chapter 191400 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Realty Transfer Tax, by revising the rate of the tax.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are thirteen and nays are four. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. 160511.
An Ordinance Authorizing the Director of Planning and Development, on behalf of the city, to file applications with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Community Development Block Grant to participate in the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Emergency Solutions Grant Program, and for a Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Grant.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are seventeen and nays are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160171.
An Ordinance Adopting Section 10834 of the Philadelphia Code, entitled Responsibility to Avoid Possession and Discharge of Firearms by Children, by requiring safe storage of firearms and ammunition.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass. Councilwoman Blackwell. Councilwoman Dom. Councilwoman Green. Councilwoman Greenlee. Councilwoman Gim. Councilwoman Heenan. Councilwoman Johnson. Councilwoman Jones. Councilwoman O'Neil. Councilwoman O. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown. Councilwoman Squilla. Councilman Taubinberger. Council President Clark.
Aye. Ayes are sixteen and nays are one. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 160172.
A resolution authorizing Philadelphia City Council's Special Committee on Student Loan Debt pursuant to Resolution Number 160048, to investigate ways the city of Philadelphia can lessen the burden of student loan debt upon our citizens, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And the resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and honoring and celebrating Walter Higgins on his over 35 years of dedicated service to the Laborers Local 57, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring and celebrating Walter Higgins on his over 35 years of dedicated service to the Laborers Local 57, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, honoring, and celebrating Walter Higgins on his over 35 years of dedicated service to the Laborers Local 57, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring the outstanding season of the Frankfurt High School's Pioneers baseball team and their continued dedication to academics and the community, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and honoring only charter high schools' Trojans baseball team and coaching staff on winning the 2016 A Division Championship, the Public League Championship, and the 2016 District 12 City Championship, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Public Health and Human Services to hold hearings to determine whether councils should establish a families oversight cabinet to review the impact of the city of Philadelphia's operating budgets and matching grants on the city's growing rate of poverty, introduced by Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gunez Sanchez.
Can I speak briefly?
Absolutely.
Before I ask for motion. Throughout this budget discussion, I've spoken numerous times around the need to realign some of the budget departments to better serve what are the goals that has been espoused by new Mayor Kenny and this council over time. With a growing poverty rate, our safety net departments total $2.7 billion. I think it's time that we start digging deep into those budget line items to look how we provide services to Philadelphians' most neediest constituencies, from housing to mental health services, to health services, and obviously, the ongoing discussion that we've had about the DHS reform or privatization to POAs. I think we owe it to the citizens of the city of Philadelphia to make sure that city government is responding to these needs. So I want to thank the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee, Councilwoman Bass, for co-sponsoring this with me, and I look forward to a zero-based, performance-based budgeting process with all of the departments charged with serving Philadelphia's neediness. And I move for its adoption.
Thank you. It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring and celebrating College Possible Philadelphia and its first graduating class of high school students on their many achievements, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on the Disabled and Persons with Special Needs to hold hearings regarding Pennsylvania Autism Insurance Act of 2008, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. During this year, I've had multiple hearings regarding this issue in reference to autism and special needs. One of the issues, as our former councilman and former Speaker, Dennis O'Brien, introduced this legislation in Harrisburg in reference to providing insurance opportunities for people on autism spectrum, however, that has not fully come to fruition, and the purpose of this hearing is to have additional conversation regarding that issue. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the development of co-ops in the city of Philadelphia and initiatives to support their growth, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I move for adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in probably second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it? And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Commerce and Economic Development to hold hearings regarding the potential implications of instituting a city use and occupancy tax to reduce the business income and receipts tax rate, introduced by Councilman Green.
Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. One of the issues that we've had here in the city of Philadelphia is the tax issues we've had for small businesses. I started my career as a small business lender with Meridian Bank at Broad and Glenwood, and witnessed firsthand the impact that some of the taxes we have in the city of Philadelphia impacts small businesses. This resolution is an opportunity to start that conversation of ways we can possibly reduce small business taxes here in the city of Philadelphia. Considering we've had such a contentious debate on issues regarding taxes, my thought was we need to have more time to investigate this issue. we need to have more time to investigate this issue and have hearings in the fall. And in that perspective, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution calling for the creation of a task force on retirement security for private sector employees in Philadelphia introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the life of esteemed West Catholic Preparatory High School graduate and rising star basketball player Akira Murray who tragically lost her life in the Orlando nightclub shooting massacre introduced by Councilwoman Blackwell.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Move for the adoption and thank everybody for the support, especially Councilman Jones.
In property second? Thank you. Let's take a standing vote. Thank you. It's adopted.
And a resolution initiating action to establish a Neighborhood Improvement District to be known as the South Ninth Street Area Business District in an area that generally includes properties located on portions of South Eighth Street, South Ninth Street, South Tenth Street, Christian Street, Monroe Street, Carpenter Street, Washington Avenue, Ellsworth Street, East Pasianka Avenue, and certain other streets within the area depicted on the preliminary plan and including curb market stands located along certain of those streets, and to designate South Ninth Street Area Business District, a Pennsylvania nonprofit corporation, as the Neighborhood Improvement District Management Association for the district introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the Korean-American veterans of the Vietnam War for their service to the United States introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution appointing Mark C. Reed to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six three five entitled a resolution appointing Howard Wurzak to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair, one more time, recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six three six entitled a resolution appointing Jeffrey B. Goldstone to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you again. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six three seven entitled a resolution appointing Kevin Mickles to the Board of Directors of the City Avenue Special Services District introduced by Councilman Jones.
Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Again, I move for its adoption.
Moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six four seven entitled a resolution appointing John Conner to the Board of Directors of the Center City District introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six four eight entitled a resolution appointing Jeff Devuno to the Board of Directors of the Center City District introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six four nine entitled a resolution reappointing Ronald Boland to the Board of Directors of the Center City District introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
Resolution Number one six oh, six five oh entitled a resolution appointing Darrell Adams to the Board of Directors of the Center City District introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six five one entitled a resolution appointing Joseph Corredino to the Board of Directors of the Center City District introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
And Resolution Number one six oh, six five two entitled a resolution appointing Tom Zaff to the Board of Directors of the Center City District introduced by Councilman Squilla.
Chair recognizes Councilman Squilla.
Thank you again, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. And that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Hallelujah. And these speeches on the part of the minority... Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
Just very brief remarks. I just would like to say that my first six months in office have been a great learning experience. I've learned something from all of my colleagues, and I hope that my relations grows with each one of you. As we part, I would like to say that over the next three and a half years, I do that we cease to increase more taxes on the citizens of Philadelphia. I hope we stop coming up with new ways to regulate business over information that the city already has available. It is incumbent upon us as a government to find savings and to make sure city government is working for the people, not the other way around. Finally, we, as a council, should not be content with the status quo. With one-third of our population in poverty, being the largest, poorest city in America, we must focus over our term on economic growth opportunities that is really the only path forward to helping solve our many issues, and I thank you all for serving with me.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Before I make a brief statement, I want to remind everybody, well, first of all, happy Father's Day to all the fathers in this room in the city of Philadelphia, and remind everybody that there's a Gary Papa Father's Day run that is going to be on the Parkway this Sunday, the nineteenth. You can register online, just come out and join us. This is a little personal to me, unfortunately, and it's been no secret that I have, you know, beat prostate cancer seven years ago, and, you know, I'm going to run my tail off, no matter how long it takes. I'll be there and be proud. So, join me and join other fathers and just join, you know, the cause to educate our men and families, you know, just to get a brief checkup. So, I want to get that added away. But I wanted to take a moment to thank all the members here in this body for an incredible, an incredible spring. All right, this has been the most contentious and complex budget process that I've been a part of, but this body was able to come together, to build a consensus, and to move forward with a plan that I think will invest in the city of Philadelphia and invest in the city of Philadelphia's children and the city's future. And I think it's important also to point out, all right, that, you know, we as a body in this city council has done a lot of other things and not just passed a sugary beverage tax, all right? In this spring, we have dealt with many issues, all right? One of them, public safety and the criminal justice reform, highlighted financial challenges Philadelphia has faced regarding retirement and student loan debt and the impact those challenges will have on our city as a whole. We prioritized our health and welfare being of our children, looking at lead exposure, water access in our schools, ensuring longtime homeowners had received tax relief. Urges the state and federal government to do many things, many a number of things, including to protect our workers' rights, address predatory lending, and perform its constitutionality and its constitutional duty. Emphasize the importance of fiscal responsibility for our city, the city of Philadelphia. Prioritize small businesses on our commercial carters, especially those who live in the city of Philadelphia. Authorizing joint hearings, Council President, as we have done in the past, to investigate absentee landlords, tax delinquents, and bank foreclosure properties that are blatant in our neighborhood and that are causing a nuisance and putting our public at risk on a regular basis. And that's what we've done in the first five months of this year, this calendar year. So, and that only begins to cover what we have done and will continue to do. So, Council President Clark has always talked about how productive we are as a body, and all I can say is that I am in awe of every member of this council and all the high-quality work that we have created in the first five months, and I look forward to working with you in the tremendous amount of advocates, constituents, for the betterment of the city of Philadelphia, and I'm honored to be with you and serve with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
So, I'm going to keep it short. I had this long speech about Juneteenth and the importance of, for purposes of consciousness. We are one of forty-three states that are celebrating Juneteenth tomorrow, and Councilwoman Bass talked about the Johnson Home celebration from ten to, I think, six. I think that's important. But the first Juneteenth parade kicks off tomorrow at twelve o'clock, and I think it's really important to recognize that Rahim Islam and Kenny Gamble and others put together this parade to recognize the fact that it took two years from the time the Emancipation Proclamation happened for folk to get the word, the memo, the email down in Texas. So, it's an interesting celebration. Our mayor, Mayor Kenny, who always has been really conscious about history in Philadelphia is going to be there along with many of my colleagues, Councilman Johnson and others. And I think it's worthwhile. I think it's the kind of thing that highlights the fact that we are a city that is diverse, and we recognize each and every aspect of our cultural diversity. I feel honored every year when my Irish colleagues allow me to be on St. Patrick's Day, a honorary member, and we're going to keep that tradition alive, and please come out and enjoy yourselves responsibly on the Juneteenth parade. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much. On a lighter and more happy note, I'd like to just congratulate Philadelphia's girl group, Good Girls, for a great performance on America's Got Talent, and they are coming back. They're very strong, so please keep an eye out for them and give them your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Carter, that's your group? You know them, all right. Yeah, they performed at one of our festivals out in Strawberry Mansion. They were awesome. Good to see that they're taking the next step. Good stuff. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you. Mr. President, I certainly would like to thank this new council, your excellent leadership, and after being here a real long time, as some of us have, especially me, we really get a chance to look back and compare, and this has been a wonderful group. Our new folks are very, very talented and hardworking, and those of us who've been here are very, very pleased with this new council. This was a tough council. It's not often we see labor split. That made life difficult, and hopefully we can all come together and all continue to work together. And let me say, all that is said, you know, for our commission, we deal with Councilman Jones' Juneteenth a lot, but to all who are here, we say, God bless and have a great summer.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to give a shout out to all the fathers this weekend. They have a great Father's Day weekend, and tomorrow we'll be having a brunch in the City Council caucus room from twelve PM to two PM. I'll be honoring some fathers throughout the city of Philadelphia, not only for their contributions to the city of Philadelphia, but most importantly, the contributions to their families. And so, being a new dad, I understand the critical importance of bearing there for my son Isaiah Mandela Johnson, but most importantly, celebrating the role that fathers play in our society. And so, to all the dads, you know, happy Father's Day weekend, and join us tomorrow if you would like to, tomorrow at twelve PM in the City Council caucus room, room four forty. Thank you, Council President. And everyone have a great summer.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you so much. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to be brief and thank all my colleagues because I really didn't know what I was doing coming in here, and everybody gave me a big help, so I really appreciate that. But I also want to mention something I'm very, very happy about. It came out, I think, yesterday, and that was in Forbes Magazine, and all of us, city council, government, business, every resident of the city should be extremely proud of that we're rated the number-one city in the country for millennials. We beat New York, we beat Boston, we beat every other city that we're used to not beating, and we beat them. We're the number-one in the country today for millennials to come to a city, and that's probably a great honor for not just, it's not for me because I haven't been here that long, it's for everyone else who's been here and for the people of this city. So, thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmen. And before we call for an adjournment, I just want to say, thank you all so much for continuing this, as I like to refer to it, the most productive council in the history of the city of Philadelphia. So, I want to congratulate all of you for the great work you've done, the camaraderie. Although we have five new members, we continue to build that camaraderie, so I want to thank you all so much. I look forward to taking it to the next level on a number of series. Just to remind everybody, we will be having a hearing on the Committee of Fiscal Stability this summer, so we can address a number of different issues. It will be a pretty broad range of conversation. Look forward to your participation, and most importantly, school is out. Thank you all very much. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown for motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President. I simply want to remind our members that summer entertainment at the Dell is extraordinary and that the Philadelphia Dance Company, affectionately known as Philadanko, will be performing July twenty-ninth at the Dell, and that alumni are coming back to dance at Danko at the Dell.
All right.
So, for those who... So, with that said, we want to move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, September eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at ten AM.
Thank you.
It's been moved in property second. The council adjourns until Thursday, September eighth, two thousand and sixteen, at AM. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it.